But we like to call this meeting the Lakewood City Council for Tuesday, January 22nd. Order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Bokey, Councilmember Branstadter, Councilmember Moss, Councilmember Simpson, Deputy Mayor Whelan, Mayor Anderson, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now would you please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag slay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
Now it's my great, great pleasure to invite Mr. Bob Warfield of Lakewood Community Foundation Fund to the podium to present the Larry Saunders Service Award.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Distinguished City Council, city staff, Lakewood citizens and fellow directors. I'm Bob Warfield, privileged to serve the Lakewood Community Foundation and honored again by your presence, particularly on a night like this. Tonight is our second presentation of the Larry Saunders Service Award, this one for 2018. My mission tonight is thank you. In partnership with the City of Lakewood, we are grateful for the spirited participation of citizens foremost, our dear Sally, Mrs. James Lawrence Saunders, who is with us tonight. And Sally, thank you for shorting your Kona sunsets to get back here for us. We are truly honored to acknowledge our esteemed Mayor Anderson and City Manager John Caulfield, who together with our city council and staff remain committed to managing the essential 24/7 business of a complex city, along with training for Amtrak. I'm informed they are still getting a paycheck for showing up daily to keep us safe, connected, and responsibly engaged with the demanding orchestra of visionary planning, performance, review, and oversight as Lakewood requires. Their passion for community and yours, our geography, institutions, and traditions, charity, and service represent a calling that brings all of us together tonight. Parenthetically, I want to thank our almost-new city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, congratulations, who together with Mel Perusso and their colleagues served the city hall reception from the lower floor to the stratosphere, ever graciously tolerant of intrusions to keep us pointed in the right direction. Thanks too to all of the men and women who service above self, lights our city and fosters community throughout Lakewood. Extending themselves with selfless endeavor, they currently are represented on our board by Nicole Hancock, Greg Kredyski, and Enquist from Rotary Club of Lakewood, Bob Lawrence, Sidney Koontz, and Joyce Love Day from Rotary Club of Clover Park, Jerry Dunlop, and Peggy Kennel, who are fellow at-large reps for community. Each is dedicated to our foundation and its exclusive commitment to Lakewood. If you're here tonight, any of you, would you please stand for recognition? Thank you. We're especially grateful for the cooperative response of Tammy Steele, President of Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, representing community, who joined Marie Barth to represent the city, and Sidney Koontz to represent the foundation, to staff our award recognition committee and review nominations and decide the 2018 award. I also want to acknowledge with special appreciation John Simpson, Greg Horn, Barlow Buescher, Dr. Robert Allen, Christine Dodson, and Judith Davis, for their responsive community outreach and thoroughly considered nominations. As our city approaches its 23rd anniversary, we might pause to recall the trials of origin and vital importance of informed civic life. Nearly forgotten now, but going back three decades, is the Weekly Lakewood Journal. Its inspired publisher, Vince Stracoli, in an analog age of stubby pencil cut paste journalism, candled his professional passion to eliminate Lakewood toward imagination sufficient to incorporate. Rumor has it Vince is still around. If so, my hat is off to him with lasting gratitude. If any of you know him, please say hi. Times have changed, swept along into the digital age. We are fortunate that Lakewood's candle still shines through our daily journal, The Suburban Times. For those not exhausted by moderate progressive squabbles and hidebound tweets, the news that matters most for Lakewood community gets dependably posted for us every morning by the Herald of Lakewood. Ben Skler since 2005 has been the publisher of The Suburban Times. I don't know if Ben's here? Ben? Ben, would you please stand for recognition? Thank you. It's been said before and will be again, Lakewood's brief history of exceptional public service shines in honored relief with numerous people worthy of recognition. Among these, none surpass the likes of General Bill Harrison, first mayor of Lakewood, and our dearly remembered, retired Army guy, founding chief of Lakewood Police Department, Larry Saunders. Their exemplary energy and breadth of commitment inspires all of us toward attentive interest and regard for community. In remembrance of Larry Saunders, we recognize in faithful tradition of distinguished service to community, this second presentation of the annual award of the Larry Saunders Service Award in his honor and memory. The 2018 award goes to, it's a secret, none of you has heard this before, Rotary Club of Lakewood. And here to present the award together with Mayor Anderson, this is your cue, is Mrs. James Lawrence Saunders. Sally, would you? This is a two-person job. And Gail, President of Lakewood Rotary. Gail Selden?
Yeah.
Is your, or I'll let you guys figure out how to hand them swap. Whoops, wrong one. Sorry. There's nothing here. Here we are.
You got something else?
Yeah, this is, this, yeah, don't go away, but.
No, I'm gonna invite everybody down in a minute.
I'm sorry?
I'm gonna invite the Rotarians down.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry if you have something else to.
Yes, let me continue. This, this is a rehearsal tonight. We're gonna do it again next year. Let's see where my notes take me. In the Rotary of Lakewood with this award has chosen Spring Brook Connections to receive this year's grant, and here to receive the grant is Spring Brook Connections Inspiration and Founding President Jesse Black. You're on Jesse. And you? And now if I could ask Sally, before you sit down, if you would help me present the special plaque. And closing thought, I want to, I want to thank Bryn Grimley for being here, our connector with Lakewood Connections. And closing thoughts, I ask everyone to feed your passion, and excuse me, I guess you've got some remarks to make.
I do, but it's you.
No, let me, let me, let me follow you. This is very brief.
No, no, no. Don't go ahead, Tadish.
Okay. Feed your passion. Find a way to give of yourself, a way to care, a way to reach out to people you've yet to meet with thanks. Adding to Oprah Winfrey, make time, make peace, make change, make love, and make sure your voice is heard. And never forget the kindness of strangers. Thank you.
I'm Gail Selden, and I'm the current president of Lakewood Rotary. And I've got to tell you that we are honored as a club to get this award. Larry was a spirit that, he was a member of ours for a short period of time, but he was a spirit that brought this attitude. It was not, we can't do that. It's what way are we gonna do this? How are we gonna be impactful? What can we do to make this better? And his energy, we try to bring with us every day. We really do. Sixty-two years in a community deserves a little bit of time, so thank you, City Council, for this honor. I calculated that our club has provided over $3 million of funding for things in our community, whether it's a baseball field, a renal dialysis center, the Child Sexual Assault Center at Mary Bridge Children's Hospital, little projects, big projects. But one I wanted to talk about today, in honor of Larry and in honor of our grant gift, is a project that was started in the 90s. There was a field outside of McCord Gate, and it actually was owned by one of our founding members. It was full of debris, and it was the only place in this area that children could play, but it wasn't a playground. It was a field. It was, it was just desolate. So the Rotary Club of Lakewood, hand in hand with the Rotary Club of Clover Park, the City of Lakewood, the Nam's Foundation, the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation, developed this field into what became known in 2000 as Spring Brook Park. So we built this facility. We cleaned the blackberry bushes. We poured the concrete to have the first basketball hoop. But you can build a place like Spring Brook Park, but it takes the community around it to make it a gem. And that's what Spring Brook Connections has done. They have built a community about around that park. They have developed it. It's a great connector for the Lions Club, for Partners for Parks, for the Boys and Girls Club. And it is just so wonderful to see all these connections in this community come together in one area. So we're really proud of you, Spring Brook Connections, and we hope you enjoy that grant money in Larry's name from us, because you have the spirit of him. So thank you all very much.
Well, to wrap this up, I won't wax eloquently like Bob, or speak with the passion of Gail, after all, I'm Norwegian. And I will be short. Two items. One, in case you don't know, the City of Lakewood has funding for the acquisition of two additional houses adjacent to Spring Brook Park, so the footprint will expand. And number two, I'd invite all Rotary members down in front of the podium for a duty photograph here. So come on down. Come on, Joe.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight and behaving yourself. Now I'd like to invite Chief Mike Zaro to the podium. Chief Zaro? Chief? So I received a surprise, I guess it shouldn't be a surprise correspondence, because the competency is, his competency is well-known, but an unsolicited letter from the United States Marshal Service, Department of Justice, for the Western District of Washington, addressed to myself as mayor. This, I like to read it. It's about our chief and our department here in Lakewood. This letter is to formally acknowledge Police Chief Zaro. Through his leadership and unwavering partnership with the United States Marshal Service, we collaboratively arrested 871, it's 871 violent offenders in the Western District of Washington. Our task force to include the Lakewood Police Department cleared 1,057 outstanding felony warrants in fiscal year 2018. Our task force was recently selected by the U.S. Marshal Service Director's Office in Washington, DC, for a Director's Honorary Award for Distinguished Task Force Group. This is one of the highest honors granted by the U.S. Marshal Service to recognize employees and citizens who perform in an exemplary manner. We are proud to have been recognized and furthermore, are proud to be partners with the Lakewood Police Department. The motto of the U.S. Marshal Service Western District of Washington is "One Team, One Fight." We are committed to continuing to work with the Lakewood Police Department to reduce crime and increase public safety in your community. Sincerely, Jacob Green, Acting United States Marshal, Western District of Washington. So Chief Zaro, I didn't want this to go into a file. I wanted it to be publicly acknowledged so that you and the members of LPD can gain the credit you deserve. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson and councilmembers. You know, we, I always say that we are not an island here in Lakewood. We're not like Othello, where as soon as you step outside of Othello, there's nobody else around. We, it's imperative that we look for vital partnerships and viable partnerships that help us improve public safety, and this is one of them. I do also want to specifically recognize the work of Investigator Mike Merrill, who is a, he's our representative on the task force. I assure you, if it wasn't for his outstanding work, I wouldn't have gotten this letter. So the credit really goes to Mike for the work he's done there, but thank you for this. It means a lot.
Thank you. So I'll stay in place for a recognition of January as School Board Recognition Month. And I understand that our originally designated school board member was ill or indisposed and wasn't here, so I will check. I don't see any replacement here. So I'll read the proclamation and we can provide it later. Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do to be successful, and whereas school boards ensure that student assessments are tied to establish standards, and whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement, and whereas school boards align school district resources to assure students meet standards, and whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can achieve at high levels, whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability, and whereas school boards are committed to continuous education, continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council proclaims the month of January as School Board Recognition Month. And thanks to Clover Park School District Board of Directors for all their dedicated service in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world, and urges all citizens to join us in thanking the members of the Clover Park School District Board proclaim this 22nd day of January 2019. Don Anderson, Mayor. So let's give a little applause and recognition to the school board. I'm, I'm certain they're all working hard except, actually, I would note except for my daughter, who's a member of the school board and just had a baby a couple days ago. So that's why she's not here. But we'll thank them when we get the opportunity. We'll skip over the Clover Park School District Report and move to public comment. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue of pertinence to city business, whether or not it's on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on as a 30-second warning. The red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself and your place of residence, such as Paul Bokey Lakewood, Washington. The first person who has signed up to speak is Mr. Dennis Hogg.
Dennis Hogg, Lakewood, Washington. Donald Trump and 62 million of us that elected him, voted for him, have been called every name in the book, like bigoted, misogynist, whatever. Well, during the Christmas vacation, he was busy at work over the last four or five weeks. Here's what he's doing with some of the smartest minds in the Afro-American world. You got people like Ben Carson, Tim Scott, and the Opportunity Investment Law that was passed, of course. It's always hard to make sure that you get the intended consequences in big organizations. These are the people that will be watching to make sure that low-income minorities get benefits, jobs, jobs, investment. And of course, the other thing is the border security. He was busy. He was honoring the angel parents. Those are people that have been killed or injured badly by unvetted, illegal, illegal, get that word, immigrants. And we had four yesterday in Reno, unvetted, illegal, immigrant. So right now, the way it is, is he's kind of got Nancy Pelosi backed in the corner. She doesn't think so. But every time, after this whole issue's been studied, the border security, how much, how much technology, how much wall, whether it should be spat, so pretty much been settled by everybody. Suddenly Nancy turns and says morals are, our walls are immoral. Just a sudden turnaround. Well, let me tell you something. The Guzman crime people are dancing. Every day, you trade a stall, and they are big, even though the old man's on. a stall, and they are big. Even though the old man's on trial, the two sons are running big. Every day, more drugs, more killings, until we let Trump get his system together and get it done.
Thank you. The next person who's signed up to speak is Mr. Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. The Lakewood Historical Society has somewhat of an announcement to make tonight. This afternoon, we got the certificate of occupancy for the, for the Terrace Restaurant and the Lakewood Theater Lobby for use as a Lakewood History Museum. Hopefully to be open sometime this summer, maybe as late as September because there's going to be a lot of roadwork out in front, but we'll try and work around that. We got the keys to the door, so we're approved to move. We've actually got a year to, to make the move, but hopefully be a lot sooner than that. Thank you.
Next person up is Ms. Diane Formoso.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Diane Formoso. I live in Fercraft, but I also live in Lakewood. It's kind of a dual citizenship in both areas. I'm here tonight to report on caring for kids, what we did in two thousand eighteen. Clothing Bank orders of new clothes, we did one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two kids. School Supply Bank, we did five thousand seven hundred and eighty-six kids served. New books, we gave out six thousand two hundred and ninety-six books. The Ready to Learn Fair, we helped one thousand seven hundred and thirty kids. The Holiday Fair, we did seven hundred and fifty families, which is probably over two thousand kids. We did one hundred and fifty-seven growing up as fun bags. Dental Kids, we did two thousand two hundred and forty-one. We also just put together baby clothes bags, and we distribute them through our Clothing Bank plus through WIC and it goes, and also Guadalupe Maternity Center. Emergency Meals, we did eight hundred and ninety-one, which includes a can of chili, a can of fruit, a cup of soup, a bar, and just other small things that we can get our hands on to hand out. We put them in used grocery sacks, and so when we send them out, they can just put them in their backpacks and take them home. We distributed two thousand seven hundred and fifty color books between Halloween and Christmas. McDonald's coupons have been really great, gift cards. We give them out to homeless kids and families that are struggling. We gave out one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven. Air beds, we've been giving out so many that we only did ninety-four this year. Blankets and pillows, we did one hundred and sixty-nine. Laundry soap cases is something we started new. We got a donation of laundry soap, and we send like a case out to the schools, and they can distribute it to the families that need, that need to wash their clothes, and we have plenty of them. I'm here tonight to not only talk about caring for kids, I'm also here to invite you to our major fundraiser, which is February second, and it's going to be at the McGavick Center. I know there's a lot of fundraising going on right now, but the kids come first. And so, that's where we're at, and if you're interested, I've got flyers, or you can contact me anytime. Are there any questions? I have some, if you didn't get the paperwork last week, I've got paperwork here, and I'll leave it out in the front, okay? Thank you.
Give it to the city clerk. She'll distribute it. Diane? If you give her a copy, she will get them. The next person who has signed up is Gregory Bush.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Bush. I'm with Wireless Policy Group, and I'm here tonight on behalf of AT&amp;T. So, as you're aware, tonight, council has in front of it the interim ordinance for small wireless facilities. AT&amp;T would like to thank staff for their responsiveness over the past few weeks. They actually took time over the last week to schedule a conference call with industry to get our viewpoints and discuss upcoming code revision. So, we're very thankful for that. AT&amp;T will provide its own comments. I understand Verizon has commented over the last couple of weeks, and those comments are going to do with technical feasibility and how to better align the more permanent code with federal law, and will provide our comments before the hearing on February sixth. Thank you.
That's all the people who've signed up to speak at public comment, but that doesn't preclude you if you wish to speak. If you wish to speak at public comment, please step forward to the microphone. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Please step forward and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Andrew Cruz, and I'm from Lakewood, and I work with Youth for Christ here in the Lakewood area, and we have a youth center in Tillicum, and we have, over the last year, served over a hundred kids, eleven and nineteen, and their families through partnerships to help kids understand health and safety options that are available for them, such as physical fitness and nutrition. And we've also worked to help kids to work on building relationship and social skills so that they can work better with their peers and teachers, and encouraging their academic excellence by providing opportunities for them to bring their homework or other activities that they need help with to our adult volunteers that help on a weekly basis. And then, we're open three days a week and would love to have any of you come and visit and show you what we have done and, and kind of tell you more of the story of what has been going on in Tillicum for about the last ten years through Youth for Christ, but also we are working to expand our efforts to reach out to more youth in Lakewood, and we're going to be working to collaborate with the school district to be able to provide mentoring or any sort of after-school programming that would be beneficial for middle school and high school students. And I'd love to hear any of your experience or feedback about youth in Lakewood because we don't want to go ahead with anything without the input of the community. And I've only lived here for about a year and a half now, and so I'm learning to, learning who to talk with and who to get connected with, and so I appreciate you guys' service here for the city, and would love to have you guys come to Tillicum and check out our youth center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so, we'll go another round here. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to speak at public comment? Hearing done, declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of January seventh, two thousand nineteen. B, motion number two thousand nineteen dash zero one, adopting the two thousand nineteen Citizens Advisory Boards, Committees, and Commission Work Plans. C, motion number two thousand nineteen dash zero two, authorizing the execution of a real estate purchase and sale agreement in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand for the property located, located at one four seven zero two Union Avenue Southwest, Lakewood, Washington. D, motion number two thousand nineteen dash zero three, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Northeast Electric LLC, increasing project spending in the amount of two hundred and eighty-three thousand ninety-three dollars and eighty-two cents for the two thousand eighteen citywide electrical repair project. E, motion number two thousand nineteen dash zero four, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Cascade Rightaway Services, Inc., increasing project spending to the amount of a hundred and one thousand eighty dollars for the Tillicum Boulevard Far West Drive to Weller Road project. F, resolution number two thousand nineteen dash zero one, amending the two thousand nineteen docket of comprehensive planned land use and zoning map and policy amendments. G, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Arts Commission Meeting Minutes of December third, two thousand eighteen. Two, Public Safety Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes of December fifth, two thousand eighteen. And three, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of December sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing done, I entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Whalen, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda ordinances. Ordinance number seven oh three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven zero three, amending section eighteen A point nine zero point two hundred of the Lakewood Municipal Code relative to defining wireless service facilities and adopting section eighteen A dot ninety-five of the Lakewood Municipal Code relative to interim controls for wireless technology facilities, including small cell wireless facilities in all zones, and setting February fourth, two thousand nineteen, as a date for a public hearing to establish interim controls.
For this item, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. This item starts on page one hundred of your packet, but I'm going to ask you to actually jump ahead to page one forty-two because there's two different versions of the proposed ordinance language there for your review. The one that starts on page one forty-two actually shows, as was discussed briefly last week, in the chapter eighteen A ninety-five, which if you'll recall is a renumbered entire chapter regarding wireless service facilities, but what's there is in highlighted language, the changes specific to small cell wireless facilities. And what you'll also see in this evening's packet, starting at page one forty-six, is red text within the yellow highlights, and those are the changes that are proposed based on the conversations that staff had this last week with Verizon Wireless and AT&amp;T. So, you have in front of you the, the language that the staff had originally proposed, but then it's been amended because of that conference call and discussions we got from Verizon in, in writing, and that starts on page one eighty-two of your packet. And so, the clean version starts on page one oh one, but you have that other language there. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions from Ms. Spear and Mr. Bulkey?
So, interim. We talked about this at study session, but remind me, how long, how long, and it was mentioned by the industry representative that they would be soon giving you some information, so I'm assuming we're going to go from the interim regulations to beginning to develop the new regulations. What kind of timeframe are we talking about?
The term interim controls in relation to this topic is really a statutory term of art. It's not saying that the, the controls may change a whole lot. It's simply saying that they're in place until the council holds a public hearing and then affirms that these are what you want permanent. You're certainly able to amend them, but they are just under state statute. You are authorized to adopt these without public hearing and then come back and do the public hearing within six months. The way this is presented to you this evening, your public hearing is scheduled for February fourth.
Okay. And do you, between then and now, anticipate that, you kind of touched on it, do you anticipate that there'll be major changes, or do you feel that, as is, this is close to what federal law is requesting?
It's staff's opinion that this is pretty close to what is needed to amend, based on that declaratory ruling from the FCC. We'll see what AT&amp;T provides us, if it's something that hasn't been explored yet through the conversations with them on the phone, as well as the Verizon Wireless communications we've had.
Now, this was written, and you've been in contact with the industry, but have you matched it to some others, what some other cities have done?
Yes, this is actually based on a template ordinance that was distributed by national associations that have been tracking this for the telecommunications industry, as well as looking at city of Olympia and city of Puyallup.
Thank you.
Other than viewing or researching what others have done, have, has any city staff reached out to an outside consultant, attorney, or an attorney for another city in-house that has been involved in this?
I have not. I don't know if Ms. Kelly Fong did in her work regarding the fees, but I'm not aware of that.
Mr. Whalen?
Have there been any known rumblings of any municipalities, organizations attempting to appeal administratively or otherwise the FCC ruling, or to prescribe anything more protective than what is in the draft interim regs?
If it hasn't already been filed, I am on the understanding that there is going to be an appeal. Whether or not that's going to carry the day, I couldn't tell you, and it stands as going into effect as of January fourteenth. So, it's whether the council wants to wait and see if something gets filed within your six months that you have within this interim control, or go ahead and adopt something and amend it as needed if an appeal is successful.
Assuming the FCC decision had not landed as fortuitously as it did, are there provisions of this proposed ordinance that are less restrictive than staff might have recommended?
No, no. This is, this is clarification, and we actually appreciate very much both AT&amp;T and Verizon being in contact with us because they are the subject matter experts, quite frankly, and they were able to clarify a few things just with the realities of installation and the state of the technology and those sorts of things. So, we are still of the opinion that this fits and follows eighteen A, excuse me, eighteen one thirty-three from the FCC.
Thank you. The other question, Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, I was looking at the section of the ordinance that seems to be identical in all the versions, but it's, I'm looking at page one oh seven.
Okay.
And it's eighteen A ninety-five oh five oh, priority of locations. And it seems that we've made a listing of thirteen priorities that we are asking providers to cite these facilities in the highest priority unless they can demonstrate using engineering evidence that all possible preferred locations have been exhausted before something, a location lower on the list is there. What does that, what does that actually mean, engineering evidence? Is that something just saying you want people there to talk, and this is the best place to put it? That doesn't, it's within choices. I mean, what exactly are we asking them to provide? For instance, if they want to put something in the eleventh of the thirteen, do they got to somehow come up with something that eliminates the first ten? And how would we, how would that work?
Well, council member Branstadter, first of all, this is language that is existing in the current code. This refers not only to small cell wireless facilities, but the big macro towers as well that have been around for a while now. And so, this language, I couldn't give you a whole lot of detail on, other than to say exactly that, that it's been here a while. I would assume, and I would ask either Ms. Kelly Fong or Mr. Viewer to correct me, or Ms. Walker, if any of you would, that this is all part of the permit review process, and when they come in, either under a franchise or master license agreement or a specific permit, there's going to be conversations between the applicant and the city with why they can't hit number A, so they're going to be or C, et cetera.
And I understood that these were the priorities that we had in place if somebody wanted to build a tower or put, put something that's a lot more substantial than the five G small things we're talking about. And, you know, so it, so it seems like we're adopting a set of priorities that don't match the five G things. For instance, all of these priorities are just based on zoning district, as opposed to, there's, there's nothing that speaks in any of these priorities about, you know, area of coverage or things to do that. So, it just seems hard to work. It seems to be extremely difficult language to work with by applying all the two G, three G, four G infrastructure rules to, to five G because the five G are designed to operate in very small areas where because the 5G are designed to operate in very small areas where it isn't so much an engineering question, it's a question of where you're trying to get coverage. So it seems like it's not a change. It's only underlined because it's a change in the number of a section of the code. But that when we come back with permanent regulations, that maybe one set of priorities doesn't fit all when you talk about tall, major wireless towers, as opposed to small 5G units. And that we're creating a situation where you've got to run through all these priorities to say, we're trying to make sure that there's 5G coverage in the Woodbrook Industrial Park, and you've got to put the thing in the industrial park, as opposed to be able to go and do that. So, and we're also supposed to be creating a process that doesn't take as much time. FCC wants things to be shorter. So is this really helpful in that regard?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Branstadter, what was the question?
So are these existing priorities, to just write them down and say they apply to 5G, really a practical priority listing?
Councilmember Branstadter and members of the council, your large tower wireless code is mandated by your insurance carrier, and the small cell code that's being presented is mandated by the current FCC ruling. The earlier question about whether that might change, tomorrow could bring any change in the law, but this is not an ordinance about what we might want, or what we think would be the best way to handle things. This is an ordinance about compliance with federal requirements. So it doesn't take the shape of other kinds of legislation that we bring before you. We're seeking compliance with the law.
Because it seemed to me that the FCC ruling was saying, come up with regulations that are specific to facilitate 5G small cell units. And we're just reiterating what we have for all the others at this time. And I realize we're trying to do something quickly to meet a deadline.
Yes, and I'm sorry if I haven't clarified this for the council. What the staff proposal is before you this evening does more than simply the change specific to small cell wireless facilities. Because eighteen A as a whole is going to be behind the times in terms of trying to comply with this ruling from the Federal Communications Commission, the decision was made to take the entire chapter out of the current eighteen A, which deals with everything up to 5G, update it, and pull it out of the big eighteen A package and bring it forward to you now. So what this is, is actually renumbering stuff that otherwise you would have seen in a couple of months, and then incorporating within that new numbered chapter, the items specific to small cell wireless. So this section, this priority of locations, is something that is intended and continues to apply only to up to 5G. The 5G specific language is elsewhere in the code. This is just being renumbered and done all in one piece.
Okay, thanks.
I hope that clarifies.
So I think I'm addressing Mr. Branstadter's point. With respect to the priority of locations, it appears that it remains unchanged, and the council's prior desire to keep cell transmission units out of residential areas is retained.
Correct, yes.
So that's the way I read the zoning. I don't see a lot of engineers sitting up here. See some lawyers, but they aren't very helpful sometimes. When we talk with the purveyors, can we inquire as to whether, what engineering challenges there may or may not be by restricting this to particular zoning areas, given Lakewood's particular zoning map?
Certainly, yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions from Ms. Spear? Well, thank you very much. We now move to resolutions. Resolution number 2019 dash two, Madam Clerk. We do have to vote on that. I entertain a motion on, back to ordinance number 703. Moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Branstadter, we adopt ordinance number 703. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now we move to resolution number 2019 oh two.
Resolution number 2019 dash oh two, amending the 2019 fee schedule relative to small cell permit and attachment fees.
For this, we have Ms. Kelly Fong. And I apologize, we got off to a slow start. I'm trying to accelerate things. We'd still have to vote though.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. Before you, as a resolution, to amend the 2019 master fee schedule to include interim fees related to small cell facilities. These fees were previously reviewed at the city council study session on January fourteenth, 2019. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this resolution and/or the fees.
Questions from Ms. Kelly Fong.
Just to clarify for a couple of remaining people in the audience, these comport with the FCC safe harbor fees. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Entertain a motion? Second. Moved by Ms. Ma, seconded by Mr. Whelan, that we adopt resolution number 2019 dash oh two. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now move to unfinished business. Thank you very much. Any unfinished business to come before the council?
There's no unfinished business, Mayor.
To new business, motion number 2019 oh five, Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2019 dash oh five, amending the 2019 to 2020 Legislative Policy Manual.
For this, we still have Ms. Kelly Fong.
Good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. Before you, is a motion to amend the city's Legislative Policy Manual for 2019 to include language in support of limiting single-use plastic bags. Legislation aimed at imposing a statewide limitation on single-use plastic bags, such as House Bill 1203 and Senate Bill 5323, has been introduced to the state legislature. Again, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this motion.
Questions from Ms. Kelly Fong. Mr. Whelan.
As I read the proposed language, it essentially indicates the city's support for the state's proposed legislative action, but doesn't bind us to one if the legislative action at the state level fails.
Correct. The language used was very flexible.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
There is.
Moved by Mr. Simpson. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Branstadter, that we adopt motion number 2019 dash oh five. Is there any further discussion?
I will vote in favor of the resolution, but I think it's virtue signaling on virtue signaling.
I too will vote in favor of this, Mr. Mayor, because I think it's a good step in the right direction. I like the fact that we can, we're not bound by what the legislature does, but it does start that discussion, and I do think that is a good step for Lakewood. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We now move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. I'd like to start off with a few updates. First, I'd like to call up our Assistant City Attorney and City Prosecutor, Kim Cox. We'd like to give you a review of prosecution services back in 2018.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. As you know, Kim Cox, with the fourth annual update on prosecution services, you've most likely read my memo, and you can see basically what the function of this report is, is to give you an overview of what's been going on for the past calendar year. I'll tell you that it's getting harder and harder to collate in January, so we may move this to the first week of February, so I can get you the best numbers and the best ideas on what those numbers mean. But with that said, I love our new law base system, the paperless. It gives us an instantaneous picture at any moment during the day, where we're at, as I addressed in the memo. And you could see that that system, which went live through great help, from Ms. Schumacher, actually, went live February first of 2018, and enabled us to keep more data. And I would say I'm about ninety percent confident that we're on our way to being a hundred percent confident in our numbers, which is incredible considering where we were four years ago with that office, so with the prosecution services. So as you can see, the numbers are up. There's some discrepancies between the numbers we track in our office and the numbers that are reported to the Washington courts at the state level, and as well as our court system. Are you getting the same feedback I'm getting? I'm sorry if you are.
Yes.
I don't know what to do about that. I'll move away. I'm not sure if that helped. So, but I'm hoping that next year, with law base in place for a full twelve months, that we'll have even greater fidelity on these numbers and the contrast with the different things. So what I wanted to share with you also is that in the effort, in our effort to be a team player and a community member, you can see that we work with the Crystal Judson Center, as well as the YWCA, which I didn't mention specifically, as far as taking care of victims and victim advocates. What's not in my report that I got after I submitted my report are the numbers of Lakewood residents that, when I say Lakewood, I mean Lakewood, Dupont, University Place, and Stilicum, who obtained services in 2018 at the YWCA or Crystal Judson. And these may be victims, they may not be victims of our criminal cases, they may be completely unrelated. There's no way to correlate because of privacy between victim advocates and the people seeking their services. But the numbers at the YWCA for 2018 for all four jurisdictions for which we do the misdemeanor prosecution is a hundred and thirty-eight people, while at Family Justice Center, it's two hundred and seventy-three, from all zip codes for our four jurisdictions. So that's a significant number of people, I would say, get services from both of those facilities. Like I suggested in the memo, the law base system has allowed us to process particularly out of custody. In custody is fairly easy, we hit them the same day, obviously. But the out of custody reports, we've reduced it. You could see what the numbers were as of January second, but I ran it again just a couple hours ago, and there was forty-seven out of custody reports pending, and forty-two of those were already previously reviewed, meaning I looked at them and needed additional info from law enforcement or staff work in our office, and they were back in my queue after getting that work. So I'd already touched them once and looked at them once. And so they're all easily manageable now. So that's basically it. Subject to your questions. Go ahead. Okay, so out of custody is someone who's not arrested and booked into Nisqually and/or the Pierce County Jail, waiting for me to review the case. So the in-custodies are the people who were arrested and could not bail or get out. And usually the DV, actually DV are mandated to see the judge before they get out, domestic violence assault. So they will see me the next court date. So, and that varies, like today, I can't remember the exact number, but I think I saw eleven to twenty. I reviewed and charged maybe six to eight, give or take. So, and today's fake Monday, so that was a, it's a fairly high number. You know, it's a long weekend, but in custody are the people who are arrested and remain in custody when I start scrubbing the jail list at about 6:00 AM. Did that answer your question?
I had a question for you, Ms. Cox, on the caseload numbers. I know we made a decision, a policy decision, to change the code to make the exposure of a minor child to domestic violence a chargeable misdemeanor offense. And I see that there were fifty-seven cases filed in this last period through the end of the year. How many of those cases were actually, actually resulted in a significant penalty by way of some jail time within the realm of a misdemeanor? In other words, enough to make and drive home the message that that's not okay?
I did not actually look up that statistic, and I can for you. The question you gave me, so I could remember it for tomorrow, is how many of those resulted in a significant penalty?
Correct.
I can tell you that we did run the numbers for how many were resolved. And I think it's between twenty-five and fifty percent. I failed to print out that email. But I can also get that for you, is how many of these were actually resolved. And if you'll remember, part of the goal of that particular statute, given the minimum mandatory of thirty days in jail,
Right.
was to encourage the person charged to perhaps enter into a resolution, such as a plea or a stipulated order of continuance, and avoid that charge being a result. Meaning, when I see that, I usually am charging domestic violence assault fourth degree, coupled with the exposing minor child to domestic violence, and that happens every week. And the goal is, basically, we're trying to save the victims and the juvenile witnesses from having to come to court. So I don't have the answer for your particular question today. I can tell you that a significant number of those have been resolved, and I did not have or take the time yet to drill down into what resolved means. I'm hoping the data will show that it's doing what we intended, encouraging resolution short of trial and witness testimony on those cases. And I will find out for you in the next week, if that works for you.
I appreciate that. Just in anticipation of that additional detail, can you educate us on what the range of potential resolutions could include? Other than jail time?
I'm sorry?
The range of potential resolutions of a filed minor child-to-DV case, other than jail time.
Other than jail time. Well, it has a penalty of up to $5,000 fine and all sorts of court penalties and costs, but we rarely see those kind of fines in this community. So we're talking maybe a few hundred, we're seeing.
Is there diversion, though, where they get some additional counseling? I guess I'm looking for some measurable outcomes that make the situation better.
Well, there are, we get evaluation, DV evaluations and follow-through on the treatment recommendation. No further law-abiding behavior. There's usually a no-contact order in place. I don't know that at our level, we can measure the effectiveness, other than not seeing them again, which is actually an interesting thing I may look into, to see if we've seen any of the resolved perpetrators this year again. And that might be interesting. I'll add that.
Yeah, frequent flyers, if we have evidence of that or not.
Yes. What I'm kind of, it's, there's no data to drive this, but I'm hoping that the word gets out, especially to the frequent flyers, regarding involving minor children especially, so.
It has such a huge impact, that it's good that we're doing something significant about it.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just to follow up on the deputy mayor's comments, I would really like to sort of come to agreement on what we expect the impact to be, and create something that can be incorporated into the dashboard that we're, that we're working within all the departments of the city to try to see whether we're making, achieving the outcomes that we hope to, or if we look at something that where we want to do something different. So rather, while I appreciate looking at the data, I'd like to make the data about the impact a little bit more transparent by having a dashboard item around it, however that should appropriately be worded, to reflect what we're expecting, and that we want to measure for our doing. And it's perhaps a percentage of people who we don't see a second time. Okay, if that's the most desirable outcome that I, you know, certainly like to see in domestic violence, people who are one time and then never again. I had a couple of other questions, and I'm looking at page two forty-one of the packet, which is probably page two of your memo. And I just wanted to make sure that the total number of cases in number three, in the subgroups, the exposing minor child and domestic violence strangulation cases filed, what's a domestic violence? violence strangulation?
That was the second ordinance the city council enacted at the same time as the exposing minor child to domestic violence. It was the, it's the misdemeanor version, that's all we can prosecute at this level. And we took misdemeanor, domestic violence assault, and added strangulation to take care of some of the roll-down from the felony level. So what we were getting and the law enforcement were commenting and complaining to me is that there were a significant, significant number of domestic violence strangulation cases that were being declined by the felony prosecutors. And so we wanted the ability to reflect a domestic violence assault really involves strangulation on the criminal record, so it could be seen statewide and nationwide, should there be any reason to review their criminal history. Strangulation is recognized in the domestic violence community, unfortunately, as a significant and lethal subset of domestic violence. And it was little understood when I started as a prosecutor twenty-five years ago, but it's, it's out there, and we all know it's more dangerous than the average assault four. So we wanted the record to reflect that, and that was the purpose behind the enacting of this ordinance, as I proposed, and I believe you as the city council adopted.
Okay, but strangulation is the common meaning of strangulation here, it's not a...
Is what?
It's the common meaning of strangulation.
It's a term of art, unfortunately, in the industry, yes.
Yeah, okay. And it says total number of cases referred to diversion, and it says sixty-eight. And is that just a coincidence that that's the same total number of the minor child and strangulation cases? That those numbers are the same?
Oh, you mean when you add them up? Yeah, it's just, it's just a coincidence.
Okay. And in the, in the footnotes, diversion is referred to friendship diversion capitalized. Is friendship diversion an organization, or is it an actual program, or, I guess I'm not familiar with friendship diversion?
We've been, yeah, my, my error, I should have made it more clear, we've been using friendship diversion all four years that I've been doing this report. They are the sole entity to whom we refer diversion, meaning pre-charging, can you please work with them on restitution and whatever else is needed so that we don't have to charge them? I was tasked, I believe, it was the intention of the city council and the city attorney and the city manager to try to divert as many as we can that qualify away from actual criminal proceedings, if we could. So friendship diversion has been the organization we work with and have, they were in place before I even got here in 2014. They also provide services statewide, I believe they work in Olympia, last I checked, and definitely Pierce County, Tacoma. So they are, they are a common go-to for diversion.
Hey, I guess, what's, what sort of cases are in that process, given that the number is actually small compared to twenty-three hundred criminal cases?
Well, it's small compared to almost any of the numbers on this page, but what we're doing is we're looking for someone who is not terribly violent, and we're not looking, domestic violence is not going there unless it's a questionable, is it domestic violence or is it really just a flat-out assault, which I had one I reviewed just before I came down here, it's hard to tell sometimes, given people's relationships or lack thereof. But it's mostly a gut check, and I sometimes, a couple times a year, I check with friendship diversion, like, what would you do with this case if I sent it to you? And oftentimes, it's someone young, who I don't want to create a criminal record right out of the gate at age eighteen or nineteen. Sometimes it's fairly minor with no criminal history, sometimes it's fairly minor, most of the stuff is, is minor compared to felonies, but it's fairly minor given a gap since the last misconduct. So it's just, it's a gut check, and then I'm also thinking, will they succeed? So someone who has historically had warrants or, or has no known address, they're not going to succeed at diversion because it requires a mail and a response, they mail a letter and they respond. So there's a lot of factors, not really written down, but it's, it's usually on my desk, so I have quality control, if that's any help.
Is veterans' court considered a part of the diversion, or is it?
No, sir, it's considered an alternative to the criminal process, but our veterans' court is significantly different in at least two regards that I can think of off the cuff. One, you have to have a DD 214, you have to be a veteran. Two, it's post-charging. Veterans' court does not handle pre-charging decision, cases, you have to have been charged. And so it's post-charging. Friendship diversion, we divert before we charge, we save, we save defense costs that way, hopefully. We, we never even see them, they never get even, a charge doesn't even reflect on their criminal history that we can see statewide, prosecutors can see. So completely different, but both serve the purpose of trying to not make everything a criminal process if we can. So they're alike in that way.
A number of years ago, we had, there were, there were some discussions about the driving while license suspended, and is, and there was a thought that because of criminal defense costs, that we would look to try to get those resolved other than prior to charging to save those costs. Do those cases fall in the, in the falloff of the numbers between number one and two? It's a case that's reviewed, but it's not filed?
I can't say. I can tell you that a significant number of driving while license suspended third degree only get, don't get charged because they don't fit our criteria, criteria, meaning we're looking for three in the last six months, whether they were convicted or not, we're looking for three, meaning have you learned your lesson? And if they manage to get three in the last eight months, you know, they get a break at that. But yeah, suspended thirds get a break. They, they get a break just because of the nature of that suspension. It could be for failure to pay child support, it could be they didn't pay a fifty-dollar fee to drive, Department of Licensing, though otherwise their driving record qualifies them for a driver's license. So yeah, I don't know that that's the falloff, because we have been, there's been less and less suspended thirds coming across our desks, all of us attorneys, because I get them via report, or they come in via sector citation directly to the court, and then our assistant prosecutors handle them as soon as they hit their desk and amend them down to an infraction. So they never get a public defender, they're not a filed criminal charge, we handle them that way. But I, I don't, gut check, I haven't done the math, I don't think that's accounting for any of these numbers. So, so I'm still scrubbing these, just because we got court data what a week ago, and I'm still trying to figure out what the differences are. And as soon as I have an epiphany, I will route it to you folks through my boss, the city attorney, and let you, let you know. But I'm scrubbing these because they bug me when they don't match up.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I want to concentrate on the, on page 241 of the packet, I guess page two of yours, that Councilmember Branstad was on. Now, do these numbers are all the, they include the other cities also?
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I guess I have concerns. Subtext number two, two thousand five hundred and eighty-two filed in 2017, the court is reporting three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven filed in 2018, which is a twenty percent increase. If most of that is Lakewood, that doesn't seem to me like a community that's going in the right direction when it comes to crime. So what kind of, in your mind, what kind of breakouts, what's causing this?
I'm still scrubbing this number in particular, but one thing I, I think I figured out just today is that the numbers, it's possible, I cannot verify this yet, there's a team that has to compare notes, and I just started asking some harder questions. But some of the criminal traffic and even criminal non-traffic comes directly to the court via sector citations, it's the computer system that's actually managed by the State Patrol, the officers have the computers in the car, they generate the ticket. Those don't come across our desk, I don't get a report, which is the normal way for us to count, but we do keep count of those numbers, and I'm not sure those numbers were added in. I figured out in one year there are at least six hundred of those. So that's one thing. I, I can't say that crime's going up, I, I just don't know. I also have known for the last four years, and we've been trying to sort it out, we're not there yet, believe it or not, that the court and the court system above our pay grade at the state level counts filings differently, and we're still trying to sort that out. I'll give you a, a local example. When we get someone driving down the road with, you know, suspended, say, let's go suspended two, so we don't have to deal with the suspended three, but there is suspended two. And you find out someone else in the car is the protected party in a no-contact order, you now have criminal traffic in the form of suspended second degree, and you also have criminal non-traffic in the form of violation of a no-contact order. The driver is the person who shouldn't be near the passenger. Make sense?
Okay.
In this court, yeah, so we have two types of crime, and then this court and the court system requires us to file two separate complaints for the same incident and the same bad guy or bad gal. One's criminal traffic, one's non-criminal traffic, and I still haven't gotten to the bottom in the four years I've been here, I, I ask the question, not of our court, but of the office, of the administration of the courts at the state level, and can't get a straight answer on why we have to do that. But I'm betting these numbers are partly impacted by that.
And, and we don't know what the other cities are doing? We don't know if they've increased their enforcement of certain activities?
I can find out when the Office of the Administration of Courts, the state agency, updates their numbers. As of today, they had not finished out 2018, and that's what I was thinking today. I, I've already moved this back from last year, I think, a week or two, that was not enough to collate the numbers for 2018, and I will look at those numbers because I want to know.
Are, are things getting not charged at the felony level and getting sent down on a more frequent basis? Is that another possibility?
I don't know what their numbers are. I do know, you know, I said earlier about the DV, the felony domestic violence strangulation rolling downhill, I'm not hearing the same complaints, and this is really informal, it's the complaints that come in, why didn't they charge this? Because our officers do get the links notices from the felony prosecutors that their thing hasn't been. So I can't, I can't tell you what their numbers are yet, but those show up on Office of the Administration of the Courts, too, at the end of the year. So I can, I can check that as well. But I'm watching, I don't understand from the law enforcement numbers that the numbers are up in Lakewood. So it may be just the way things are being filed or charged or what have you, but I'm looking at it, and I'll be comparing again the police department numbers, I think they have their numbers already, and I don't, I didn't, I don't recall those being up, but I can double-check.
The driving with license suspended, this is kind of a bigger issue than this council, really, on the policy side. I mean, it's a national kind of issue along with civil forfeiture laws, which, and the old driving while poor thing.
Right.
And it sounds like even in prosecutorial ranks and certainly in judicial ranks, there's some reluctance to pull the string, right, to take that car, which in some cases, which in a lot of cases is probably this family's biggest asset. Has our ordinance impounding cars for that reason outlived its usefulness?
I would not say it's outlived its usefulness in, I'm not prepared to answer on suspended third, the minor one, but one and two, those are serious offenses. You don't want those drivers driving down the road. Those are not, I didn't pay the fine. So no, I'd be, I'd be willing to think about suspended third and weigh in to the degree you want me to, but suspended one and two, no, you, you want to separate those drivers from their cars. They are, you know what a suspended one is, right?
No, I don't. That was my next question, what's a one and two?
Habitual traffic offenders suspended one, you don't see them very often, the minimum mandatory on the first conviction is ten days in jail, minimum mandatory required. As you know, that far outpaces the minimum mandatory for the first DUI. And the reason why is they've got, I forget the count, it's like five significant or ten significant convictions on their record, and DOL has said they are dangerous. So we see those guys, and we ask for very high bail. Suspended two is usually, there's a lot of other descriptions, but the main category of suspended two is the driver who's been suspended, say, for driving, you know, DUI, and they're in their initial period of suspension. It's not that they haven't paid fines, they've been told by DOL, because you had a DUI or physical control or something else, you are suspended for whatever it is, ten days, thirty days, I'm making this up. You're still in the initial period of suspension, you're still paying your consequences to DOL, basically, it's not a penalty, I don't know if it's a penalty, I don't know what they call it, but you're in the initial period, so you shouldn't be driving at all. And so those are usually our suspended twos. Those two sets of people, you do, if they're caught driving, I would highly recommend they be separated from their car, just like our ordinance allows for.
What does it take, what does it cost to get your car back?
I don't know off the top of my head. They can always, I'm not seeing very many impound hearings now, I handle those at district court, haven't seen any in a long time, which means either we're not impounding, which I doubt, because I see the reports. But they can petition the chief of police or his designee to get it released early, and I think there's a minimal fine, I can't remember, something like a hundred bucks or fifty, not minimal the sum, but it's not what it would cost to incur the tow lot fees. So I don't know, they range, they usually get their car within a matter of days, or they give up and it's auctioned off. So I don't know those number, would you like me to ask? Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just think it's a continuing debate, and we'll, we'll, we'll see where it goes.
I have a book in my office, I forget the title, but you're welcome to stop by and borrow, it's all about the whole idea of, of the financial consequences of minor crimes and how it just kind of keeps snowballing for certain populations.
Right, and I mean, and that's becoming a kind of a, again, it's bigger than this body, but it's, it is a national debate as to, you know, when it ends up five thousand dollars for someone that makes twenty thousand dollars a year for, I don't know, you would know the, the things better. Yeah, I think I'll just leave it at there, I was going to follow with something else, but I'll leave it at that, thanks. So if, if the numbers are available, could, you know, you get a year-to-year comparison on the, we call them felony declinations, to see if there's a trend there in the last couple of years where whether or not we were getting more misdemeanors that were originally charged as felony and then the prosecutors decided, arrested as felonies, prosecutors decided not to prosecute the felony and kicked it back down to misdemeanor?
I can check that, I, I have, like I said, near ninety percent overconfidence in being able to count our felony NCFs or no charges filed and referrals to our office this year. And I believe we were doing a pretty good job last year before we went computer, you know, based. So I will check those numbers for you.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, if, if, don't invent the numbers, I mean, do a, do the research necessary, but if it's available from the administrative offices of the court or readily available in your office, it'd be interesting to know when you come back with the other information.
Okay, that's, that would be with our office, I don't think Office of the Administrative Court tracks the felony declines. And just not to keep everybody, but there's two types of felony declines. One is that they call it felony decline final, and we never see it unless the cops come to us and say, why'd they, why'd they do this? And we investigate and/or charge. And then there's a felony decline referral, those are the ones we count because we know they exist. And if an officer brings something to me and we can't resolve it with the felony prosecutor, and I end up having to carve a misdemeanor out of what was originally maybe a felony, maybe not, then we would document it as a referral. But there's a lot out there we don't know about.
Yeah, that's the one we really have no, second is the one we have, really have no control over because it's a policy matter in the hands of the elected prosecutor, so.
Right.
Any other questions from Ms. Cox? Thank you, back to Mr. Coffield.
Thank you. Good evening.
Next up, I'd like to call up our Assistant City Manager and Community and Economic Development Director Dave Buer to give you, just to check in on where we are in the Title 18A update. I think as council knows, this has been a project that's been going on for a couple of years, however, just because of other higher competing priorities, it's been kind of in the back burner, however, we're hoping to be able to finalize this update in 2019.
And it'll be actually myself, Tiffany Spear, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, but Mr. Buer is here to answer any questions as well, if I can't answer them. So very briefly, on page 244 in your packet, there's a summary of the status of this project, and we are now in front of the Planning Commission with Title 18A. We've had a couple of introductory discussions with them. Long story short, and some of this you know better than I, the, the Title 18A has been around since at least 2001, and much of it has never been touched. On the other hand, there's other parts that have been amended piecemeal or for specific reasons without a comprehensive review of the entire chapter for consistency, efficiency, and making sure things just run smoothly from start to finish for both staff as well as the public who interact with the code. So that's the purpose of this update, and so there's going to be reorganization first and foremost. There's a lot of change in numbering or organization within the document without substantive change, but then there will be a couple of sections which are either rewritten completely or significantly. On page 245, you'll see a table. On page 245, you'll see a table that explains in a little more graphic form what's happening between the current version and the proposed version. There are 10 chapters right now. And there are 11 different chapters that'll be coming forward for Planning Commission and then council consideration. And they don't correspond one to one. So you may see something called a similar or the same name, but it may have different content. And then you'll see some chapters in the new version which are either combined chapters from other, or, excuse me, from the current code or vice versa. It could be multiple current code chapters coming over to the other side or a single chapter being divided up. So there's a lot of changes there. On the middle section of page 245, you'll see a couple of sections there with bullet points. First of all, no substantive changes right now are being suggested for the R1 through R4 residential zones, regulation of animals in residential districts, the housing incentive programs, the standard wireless service facilities, landscaping and tree preservation sections or short-term rental regulation. Those are all being left pretty much as is in substance, but again, being reorganized within the title. There are some substantive changes being discussed for zoning districts and what's allowed in different uses throughout the city. The site planning and development standards, the park and open space set-asides. This was actually raised by council when the downtown suburbia plan was discussed last summer and fall. And so the idea here is to implement their request to increase the required set-aside for open space for multifamily. The mobile home and manufactured home parks regulations are being proposed for some changes, as are the military zone use and regulations. The latter because of the 2015, December 2015, Air Force instruction, which updated a little bit some of the noise and construction requirements for development, both residential and non-residential within the military zones of the city. Where essential public facilities could be allowed. The small cell wireless, which you discussed earlier this evening. The pending sign code, which will be before you again this spring. And then there's a number of administrative policies that the department has, has been gathering over the years. Those have been culled down to those that are still relevant and are needing to be codified. And they will be added into the various sections that they apply to. So there were two public stakeholder meetings in the last several weeks. One was targeted specifically toward industry and those who actually live in 18A or they, they do development in 18A. And then there was also a stakeholder group for the general public. We did have attendees at both. And we had about 15 show up to the industry one. And a number of items were raised there that will either be incorporated into this current update and you'll see that coming forward to you eventually. Or we're calling it a parking lot. There may be issues that are raised that go beyond the scope and timeframe we have for this current effort. And they'll be talked about separately once 18A has been updated comprehensively. We'll start picking those up as we can, topics specifically. So on page 248, or 246, excuse me, you'll see that there is a website that's now live, 18a.org, Lakewood18a.org. And that's where we're providing people with updates regarding meetings and draft language when it becomes available. And they're able to submit comments through that website. And then you'll see as well, the proposed schedule, it's obviously subject to change. But starting February 6th, we're going to be walking the Planning Commission through pieces of the proposal and discussing various focus areas. There is another open house that will be held in March. The Planning Commission will hold its public hearing in late March and then it'll move on to action and then coming to you at some time this spring.
Just, just a couple of things from my perspective. There's three different types of reviews going on. There's an internal review with staff, which goes through in depth every individual, specific chapter and compares it to the current code. There is a, a very detailed review going before the Planning Commission. And then we've been holding these focus groups and we will continue to do so. Very likely, there are going to be certain individuals who want more details. That's always started coming forward with the Lakewood Industrial Park. We do plan on having some of these very specific meetings. There's these three reviews that are going on. Generally speaking, the comments have been very positive from just about everyone that we've spoken to so far to date. I will also tell you that when this gets to the Planning Commission and City Council, you're going to get a list of policy decisions to have to make. And it's, it's really quite interesting. We worked on non-conforming uses and non-conforming structures last week. And you're going to have the opportunity to talk about how to deal, for example, with non-conforming structures, primarily single-family residences adjacent to the lakes, where we have a significant issue and determine what level of development activity you're going to allow into the future, whether to be more restrictive or less restrictive. So those are some of the things that are going forward. I would also tell you that what I've heard so far, people are quite positive about the new design and the ability to find things faster and easier. Getting rid of 18A20, which is the land use types and levels, I think is making this a much more, a much easier document to use. And so with that, I'm sure myself or Tiffany would be able to answer your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Buer and Ms. Spear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we started this and the decision was that we need to redo 18A because it hadn't been updated in a long time and there were things we wanted to do. But, but also because it was written as a code in government speak. And a, a major feeling on the part of the council that we wanted to do back when we first were starting all this was the readability and usability of, of that because we wanted to get away from the situations of where citizens and businesses had to search the code to find everything that was applicable to them to do that. And I understand we've got some areas that are going to have substantive change and areas that not. But I'm concerned about how are we going to beta test that we've made the substantive change in format and readability, even for the things where the requirements haven't changed? Because that was one of the goals that we wanted to accomplish in this particular review. And it sounded like, and I'm just saying it sounded like, at the stakeholder meetings, people were more concerned about substance rather than the format readability usability. Or were, were there comments about the format readability and usability? Because the, the, most of the folks that complained to us, and I'll use the word complain, about the readability usability, were not the people that would come to stakeholder meetings who repeatedly use it in our, in our often users. You know, the frequent users of 18A who are in the development and business community. They've come to learn how to, how to do it and they're concerned about what it says, what are the real requirements? It's the person who uses it once a decade or once in a lifetime to add a garage on their property or to do a one-time remodel that was a group of folks that were having trouble with the way it was written and the way that you had to go through and use it. And that we were hoping we would be able to make that easier for that particular citizen or resident to, to, to be able to use 18A as one of the outcomes of this review. And I guess how, I'm, so I'm interested that we're still on track, that that's a goal? And that, and, and how are we going to beta test that with a bunch of people that have never used 18A before? And we're going to say, if you had to, how would you do this as opposed to frequent users?
Well, as an initial response to that, Councilmember Bransdottir, I will tell you that people at both of those stakeholder groups, so the industry folks and the general public, were pleased with the, the new layout and they did indicate that it was easier to follow and easier to navigate. And it made more sense intuitively. This is where I need to go for X, this is where I need to go for Y. The, there weren't any complaints, I don't think, about the way it was organized, proposed. There were a couple of suggestions to continue along the same line and maybe even reorganize further along the same way. In terms of testing it, I think part of the conversation with the Planning Commission will do that. We're going to try to be able to present it as we do it in a phased way. This is an example project. How would you walk it through? And also, we're going to be doing at least not only that open house, but another set of stakeholder group meetings where we can just say, okay, let's run a sample project through and see if we get any hiccups.
There has been a, a big effort made to try to clarify what the requirements are. What's administrative, what's discretionary and what's permitted by right. That is now laid out in the code. And there are very specific timelines by which every use permit or every permit is to be considered. There's much more detail, there's greater accountability. I think, you know, we have tried to take into account the readability factor in this new code and we've actually used examples of other cities. So I remain optimistic that we are going to go in that direction. One comment that we got from some people, that was a good comment, was on the landscaping side of things. They said, you're not making any changes there, but there's some administrative things that go on in community design and landscaping. Why don't you put that into the administrative section and, and make sure all of the things are listed? And that's a good point. So those things are going on and as we learn more through these conversations, we're open to making suggestions. One of the things we've talked about internally is having more figures and maps and graphics. We are trying to add those in, but there's some limitations on budget. We may come back and, I may request some, some additional funding from the, from the city manager to make some minor adjustments there so we can increase the picture formats. So that can make it easier for people too. So I think we're headed in the right direction. You'll be getting updates once a month on this. And beginning in February, the Planning Commission begins to take a very deep dive into this. So stay tuned, more to follow. And I guess we are listening to what the council has said about readability and trying to make it easier for everybody and, and that has been the intent so far.
Okay, thanks. I'm, I'm glad to hear that we've still got our eye on that.
Any other questions? Anything further to add?
No, thank you.
Well, thanks for the update. Back to Mr. Coffield.
Thanks, Mayor. Several updates I'd like to share. The first is we were approached by the leadership of the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition or LMCC. I think this body is familiar with this, this organization. They were established in October of 2016. Their purpose is to work with the city and the community to, among other things, other things, implement a component of the city's adopted vision, which is to embrace the diversity of what makes Lakewood who and what we are and what makes our, what makes us as a community so great. They're currently in the process of establishing themselves as a 501(c)(3). And they have asked the city to contribute essentially some startup money totaling $2,000 that once this 501(c)(3), or once they are established as a 501(c)(3), they would then use those dollars to help with their community outreach and community involvement and things, things along those lines. And what I'm looking for from this body this evening, if the council is willing to entertain that, what we would do is we would bring back an agreement, very similar to what we did with the Beechers Foundation last year, outlining, you know, the use of the funds and under what conditions the city would, 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 would provide that. However, we would not do that until the organization was established as a, as a, as an authorized 501(c)(3). So Mayor, I'm looking for either a nod one way or the other, or if you'd just like us to wait until that occurs. But certainly my recommendation would be that, you know, we, we, we provide that funding to this organization once they formally establish themselves as a nonprofit.
Mr. Whalen.
Working on the buttons tonight. This may be a question directed to Councilmember Moss, just to get a sense of the thought behind creating a 501(c)(3) for the organization as opposed to having it serve as kind of a citizens advisory board under the, the city, which might be eligible for funding like we do with the Arts Commission. I'm just curious as to what the, you know, I saw the mission statement and the vision statement you guys have set, which I think is great. What's the theory here behind the structural decisions?
I think the way I understand it, and I'm working with it, is the fact that we have more say, more authority. And the reason it's taken to this point is that we were going to go under the umbrella of another organization as a 501(c)(3). We were just going to use their 501(c)(3), but that turned out not to happen. And we had been working on that for some period, a period of time. So from 2016 until now is why, one of the reasons why. But we were, we are better organized under 501(c)(3).
Does the organization plan to do fundraising under that umbrella? Is that one of the reasons?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions from council?
So probably Mayor, more to follow on this once, once the five, once the nonprofit is established. Okay, thank you. A few more updates. I would, I would like to just recognize our, actually all of you, as well as the finance department. The city received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting by GFOA. That's the highest form of recognition that a municipality can receive here in the United States. We are in a very, very small group. About 1% of all the cities, towns and villages in Washington State actually receive this. When you include all municipal organizations, including special districts and counties, it's under 2%. Also, we received recognition for our popular annual financial report, which is a new endeavor that we undertook about two years ago. So again, a very positive reflection on this body and your leadership as it relates to financial accountability and transparency, as well as Todd Kraus and our finance division, as well as our department directors and all of our city employees. So I just wanted to publicly recognize all of you for that. On your, on the dais this evening, I placed a copy of a synopsis that we received back from both WashDOT Rail and Sound Transit. This is a follow-up to a meeting that we had with them back in October, you know, outlining the city's concerns as it relates to, again, Amtrak coming soon through our community at 79 miles an hour. I do really appreciate the time and effort that both WashDOT Rail and Sound Transit, as well as Amtrak actually put into the responses. They are going to help support, you know, the city's initiative if and when we receive the monies for the station assessment. There are also some outstanding issues there, specifically as it relates to speed, that we would like to follow up with both the UTC and the FRA. And so they are, they being WashDOT Rails in the process of hopefully looking to schedule a meeting with us, with us on that. So right now, we're focused and working with our legislators to try and get the funding to do that station assessment. What I can tell you is right now, the forms, it's all about the forms, aren't quite available. But once those are, we'll go ahead and move forward with that. We are looking to seek some sponsors on this. We have reached out to our newly-elected Representative Levitt. And at this point in time, she has provided us a response that she would prefer to wait until the NTSB findings are completed. We have pointed out that that's probably going to be March or April, could even be later. That's the latest update that we have. And by that time, the legislative session might be over. So we're going to continue to follow up with her. We're also following up with Representative Kilduff and other representatives to try and get some sponsors on that. So more, more, more to, more to follow on that. So our goal and objective here is to continue our dialogue with Amtrak, WashDOT Rail and, and Sound Transit on these initiatives.
So have you contacted any of the 29th District representatives as that runs through their district?
We have not yet, Mayor. Right now, we're working with the 28th. And then if we run into a bit of a roadblock there, we'll probably be reaching out to 29th. But right now, we're focused on 28th, since the accident actually physically occurred within their, within their district. Joint Base Lewis McCord. So there's a new Army initiative called Army Community Partnerships Program, ACP. Of course, they have an acronym assigned to it. And they have invited cities that, that touch the base to a meeting in February, actually a kind of a kickoff meeting on February 12th and then kind of some breakout sessions on February 13th. The purpose is to see if there are any opportunities for both the base and surrounding municipalities to partner on the delivery of services. You know, create a win-win, result in increased services, lower costs, things along those lines. So myself and representatives from our police department, Parks and Recreation and Public Works Engineering will be, will be attending. So myself and representatives from our Police Department, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works Engineering will be attending. Don't know where this will lead to, but certainly appreciate the Army initiating this program, and we'll see what happens.
Isn't it with, isn't it under the auspices of the current legislative authorization?
That's our understanding, Mayor.
But it's actually they're trying to do something.
That's correct. They're actually, yes, they're actually...
So the law hasn't, the law and rule, the regulations have not changed, but the Army's trying to implement something.
To us, it's new, Mayor. To us, it's a new initiative. Understand it's been around for a while.
This is Monterey move forward, okay.
Yeah, that's correct, actually, Mayor. That's correct, yep. On Friday, Shannon Kelly-Fong met with LeMay, and I'll have a more detailed update for you here in the next week or so. I think the council's probably aware that the recycling industry is having, for lack of a better term, some challenges. And LeMay or Waste Connections have gone from making money on recycling to now it costing money. Pursuant to our franchise agreement, they do have the option to come forward to this body to request a rate increase to essentially compensate them for that. However, there's no guarantee that this body will provide that. Just that they are allowed an opportunity to negotiate with the city in a, you know, in a fair manner. So we're gonna go ahead and do that. There are some other very minor items that they also brought up with us that, again, I'll have a more detailed update for you here in the near future, but just wanted to give you a courtesy update on that. Also, we're working with them to try and establish a good weekend to do the spring cleanup. So we're looking at the latter part of April into early May. And so again, more to follow, more to follow on that.
So on that, just as a clarification, our current or renewed contract with LeMay Waste Connections is still based on a fixed rate with inflators as opposed to being a rate-making type contract such as the UTC?
That's correct, Mayor, yes.
So they're asking for the best of both worlds?
That's correct. Yes. Again, you do not have to grant it. However, we do have an obligation to negotiate in good faith. And actually, what they're looking to request is a $2.10 month, $2.10 per month increase for residential customers and a $1.94 per month for commercial customers. For residential, 70, I'm sorry, $2.10. So that would, so they bill bi-monthly, so that would be an additional $4.20. So right now, for example, I know mine is $75.03, so do the math.
No, we don't have to accept it. They're on a fixed rate on their contract. So to go back to my UTC representing garbage people days, there's really two models. When you're out in the G certificates that they operate on in the county, that were the franchises that were given away to haulers 40, 50 years ago, are essentially annuities. They're like, they're utility, they go to the UTC, they get guaranteed their cost plus a profit margin. And they go in and argue, our costs have gone up, and they set their rates for the next year. They're a regulated industry. The model we have here is contractual. It's not based on a rate-making model. It is a negotiated rate that has an inflator in it. We went through this a number of years ago, and they get inflators for their union contract, and they get a cost of living, CPI. So they get CPI and they get a labor inflator. But they don't have the right, they have the right to ask, but they don't have the right to an increase because their costs have increased, just like we don't have a right to advocate for, we can advocate, I guess, to require that our residents pay a lower rate because suddenly cardboard's worth $800 a ton. So it's fixed. And they came early in my tenure on the council, and there was, fuel prices increased, and they wanted to add a fuel surcharge. And the council said no.
So moving on, so the Pierce County Library Services District late last week issued or put on the street an RFQ to seek proposals to secure the services of an organization or a contractor to help them with the public engagement for a new library, not just in Lakewood, but also Sumner as well. They're working with that community. And so the purpose of the public engagement is to work with the community to see, okay, you know, what types of services would you like to see, location, partnerships, things along those lines. And I know proposals are due in the early part of February, so that means they'll probably have somebody selected by the latter part of February or early March. And then the library's also working on kind of a full project plan and timeline. But what we're hearing from the library is that looking to, if depending on the outcome of the community process here in Lakewood, that they would be looking at bringing forward a bond proposition to the voters for their consideration in August of 2020. So that's their current thought process right now. So that's where we are. So again, more to follow, more to follow on that. I would also like to add that, you know, the city has a significant interest of incorporating, you know, some type of a community center or senior activity center into it. I also have continued my conversations with the Lakewood Playhouse, and they too are interested in perhaps partnering there. What they would like to do is they would like to have a kind of a new, larger facility for their performances. And then I asked, well, what would you do with the current facility that you had? And their vision there is they would transition that into a kids theater, because that's a program that continues to grow. And so I understand, I understand, I understand. I got some ideas. I know, I got some ideas up here, I got some ideas. Yeah, right, right, so.
For the McGavick, but that are too big for a lot of other little smaller rooms. Okay, so then that's in there, and then some room for the seniors or the community center to be used at night, and now, but...
And by the way, and so all of those items...
We'll take it on.
So all of those items, there's just me and you, so there's another 60,000 people out there, so there's probably some more ideas as well.
Exactly, well, actually, we should embrace it, because I think it might create more support.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Whelan.
I just want to follow up on that, because, you know, we've talked a lot about the need for kind of a mid-sized facility, to the extent we think that that's what the need is. What I would suggest we consider is engaging somehow, since we're doing this collaborative thing with the library, maybe we collaborate with the library to some extent on this public engagement process for the purpose of determining what the community thinks we need or the city needs for a mid-sized facility and for what purposes. And the reason why I throw that out there is, hey, we've talked about it ourselves for a lot, and this would actually validate it, right, through the process. And I was gonna mention in council comments, but I was at the McGavick Center this past Saturday for an event called GLAM, and it was for the YWCA's benefit. And to me, you know, obviously, domestic violence is an important topic and near and dear to my heart based on my comments with Ms. Cox this evening. But it also drives home to me the importance of quality facilities and the value of having quality facilities here in Lakewood that draws people to our community to see not only that specific events benefit, but also the benefit that we have as a city to be a host to any number of good quality programs and programming. So I would support us considering doing something collaborative with the library on this public participation thing with regard to the right sizing of not just the library, but the community center. It's my pithy two cents words, but...
Okay, so now that's three, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was just three of us.
Oh, if you do it right, then you get community buy-in for... Yeah, it's gotta be a community thing. Seniors compose such a large segment, right? So there's people who are 65, and they don't go to senior centers. Right, so, so I'm being very careful here. I'm trying to be, even though I don't want to be, you know? And so, I mean, some people are still in the workforce, even at a very, you know, advanced age. So, but at least I'm planning on being that, too, where I have to be. So, you know, there's challenges, right? I mean, right now, they're just in, we're just renting space in the community center. They're just there, it's old space. So when you bring that senior center out, but there's challenges to how are you gonna use the space at night? Because you do want the space to be used. And so, I mean, when you go on the internet and look at what other cities have done, they really have produced some nice, what used to be called banquet space, where you could do the, I don't even know how many people, my spatial abilities aren't that good, but you really look at what you got at the McGavick, you talk to folks and say, okay, if you don't wanna go to the country club where you can't, and you wanted to do an event of this size, what would you? 150, something like that. How many tables, those kind of things? It would be a step. So again, but then if you've got the playhouse there, then that brings in, then we're running out of space on the lot. So, but actually, that may be a positive when we start to talk about it, that there's things that we might be, you know, it might actually create more community support for what we're trying to do.
So earlier, just a few moments ago, you heard from Community and Economic Development give an update on Title 18A. A couple other significant policy initiatives they're moving forward is, forward with is, one is the Shoreline Master Program. They held a workshop last week, had a good community participation, got a lot of good feedback on that. Based on kind of the current calendar, you can probably expect an update in the Planning Commission's recommendation a latter part of March. Speaking of the Planning Commission, they moved very, very quickly on the quasi-judicial land use regulations, so quickly that that's gonna be coming forward to this body for your review and ultimately consideration in February as opposed to March or April. And then we'll bounce some other things out into March and April to accommodate that. On the partnership level, I mentioned JBLM. We also continue to talk with Pierce County on a couple of partnerships. One is to use their online PAL system, their permitting software. Also, Pualup is involved in that. We're also talking with them about contracting for services as it relates to traffic signal maintenance, and so those discussions continue. And then we're looking at maybe some other partnering opportunities such as street sweeping and vectoring, which currently we contract with a private firm. So see if there's a, maybe we can get a better deal with the county on that. So those are some initiatives that we're working with the county that we hope to iron out here in 2019. I also want to thank Pierce County Emergency Management for an incident that occurred late on Friday afternoon and into the evening, and actually sent a letter to the Pierce County Executive thanking him and his team for this. So we thought that the backup generator that provides backup to the police station went kaput on Friday. We, I mean, we thought that it was down. The good news is that after looking into it, it was actually a hose that needed to be replaced. But because of that, we could not, you know, we needed to replace that backup generator. And you can imagine, you know, the size of equipment that's needed to keep the police department or the police station going in the event we lose power. And we immediately contacted Pierce County, and they rolled out a backup generator, like, in about 15 or 20 minutes. And they came by, and they were standing by to set it up. But again, the good news is we were able to determine that, because it was really messy in terms of all the fluids that were kind of lying around, so we thought that the generator had literally gone belly up. But again, the good news is that we were able to, within a couple of hours, determine that it was primarily a hose issue. And then the county, you know, they took the generator back. But really, you know, really, really appreciated that, because you just never know when a windstorm is gonna come through. And of course, you know, public safety being a number-one priority, we needed to have the police station operational. So just wanted to thank the county for that. The Lakewood Downtown Sabaria Plan is set for certification by PSRC, so we expect to obtain that here during first quarter. We were contacted last week or late, or the week before, by the Transportation Improvement Board, that the Washington Department of Transportation had actually nominated us for a Complete Streets Grant, totaling anywhere from $100,000 to $200,000 to $300,000. And they asked us, they said, if we gave you this money, all three categories, what would you use it for? Of course, the Colonial Center Plaza is the Complete Streets project that we're currently working on. So we're in the process of submitting that to the TIB Board, and hopefully, we can, you know, obtain some additional funding to help buy down the cost of that project to alleviate our transportation budget that can, those monies can be used elsewhere. So more to follow on that. But that was really a pleasant surprise and really nice of WashDOT to do that for us. As it relates to the council calendar, tomorrow, the Tacoma-Pierce County Chamber is having their annual Horizons Economic Forecast Event at the Greater Tacoma Convention Center. I know we have a couple of staff that are gonna be attending that. Your annual joint meeting with the Clover Park School District is a week from yesterday. On Monday, January 28th, it will be here at 7:00 PM, will be here, and we are hosting. Also, you heard from Diane Formosa, February 2nd, Caring for Kids. We also received a notification, it was either late last week or today, that the Pierce County Regional Council is gonna be holding their General Assembly Meeting on Thursday, February 24th, beginning at 5:30, 21st, I'm sorry, 21st, 21st. And that's gonna be held in Pualup at the Washington State Fair Events Center. So that's what I got on your calendar. I wanted to give you, hopefully, a brief update on legislative. So Week 1 is in the books. I think about 850 bills so far have been dropped. Right now, our focus is on, okay, what makes the cut between now and February 22nd, which is the first cutoff for the policy. I had mentioned our initiative to try and get a sponsor for, you know, for funding out of the transportation budget in support of our request for money to do an assessment on some kind of, on an Amtrak station. And so we'll continue to work on that. The Military Benefit Zone, so that legislation is moving, and it is moving very, very well. We have a number of folks who are supporting it, definitely also has bipartisan support. Representative Kilduff is gonna be the primary sponsor in the House side, and she's also encouraging legislators from all military communities to sign on and support. And she's, I think she'll get there, I think she'll get there. On the Senate side, we have asked newly-elected Senator Emily Randall from Bremerton, who represents Kitsap, Mabel, and everything that is ocean-going over there, to be the prime sponsor on the Senate side. And she is new, so she's not familiar with this. And so if for one reason or the other she's not comfortable with it, Senator O'Ban is standing by, and so he will be the primary sponsor to introduce the bill on the Senate side. But it is moving along, and we expect to have a hearing here in the next week, week or two. And so we'll be all over that. Also, there is another bill that we are very, very pleased to see has been introduced, and it's been introduced by Representative Christine Reeves. And I kind of call it the BRAC bill, if you've, you probably heard Senator Conway talk about this. We need a pot of money to help military installations be BRAC-proofed. And that's essentially what it is, however, they have a different name for it, the Defense Community Compatibility Account. And what it would be is it would be funding that's set aside to help local communities to address encroachment and compatibility issues between the community and military institutions or installations. It would also require the Department of Commerce to establish a list of projects and prioritize them every biennium. And then agencies or communities would apply for the monies. There would have to be a match, that's the way it's currently set up. But this is something that is completely new to Washington State. However, it is something that's not unique to states, and that there are a number of states throughout the Union that have significant military presence, a presence in their states that do have this. So this is certainly a foot forward, and it's, we're very excited about it. Hopefully, it'll make the cutoff and actually move along. But it is something that we'll be weighing in as well as SSMCP is, is, is weighing in also. Again, number of bills moving forward. On the transportation side, just wanted to make the council aware. Senator Hobbs, who's Chair of the Senate's Transportation Committee, is looking at kind of a mini-transportation package. And one of the projects that's on the list is three hundred and fifty million dollars to extend HOV lanes from Thirty-Eighth and South Tacoma all the way to North Thorn Lane. If you drive through kinda the curve there by the Tacoma Dome, that's what they're doing, they're adding HOV lanes. So this would extend HOV lanes down to North Thorn Lane. Most of the work, I, my understanding, based on the three hundred and fifty million dollar estimate, would be done with restriping. It's really just paint. So it's not replacing all of the overpasses. It's essentially just realigning what already, what already exists. Also, SSMCP in the city of Lakewood supports a seven million dollar request to evaluate future improvements further south in Pierce County into Thurston County, all the way down to Tomwater. And so that's also being considered. So some, some good news there. One of the outstanding issues that a number of cities have had concerns, and our city attorney sent a letter to LNI on, is the issue of, of prevailing wage on landscape workers. And so, right now, the Department of, well, LNI is suggesting that maybe this can be addressed as part of rulemaking as opposed to a legislative solution, which would be great, and basically distinguish the difference between a landscape maintenance worker, which really shouldn't be subject to this huge increase in prevailing wage upwards of thirty-seven dollars, and landscape contractors, which are folks that are actually out there, you know, building stuff. And so, so kind of a bright spot there. So if we can get it resolved through rulemaking versus a legislative solution, I know cities, including Lakewood, we would be very, very pleased with that. Something that cities have been bantering on for a number of years is the fact that we have to pay, you know, we, we pay essentially full freight on indigent defense, indigent defense. And, and so there is a bill that has been introduced to help cities with that mandate. And I think this body might remember, a number of years ago, we are now restricted in terms of how many cases our public defenders can handle, no matter how efficient they are or how good they are. And that has resulted in huge cost increases for, for cities, to the point where we now pay more or similar amounts for public defense than we do for jail, as an example. And so this would be a welcome relief in terms of financial assistance to cities if it, if it makes its way through. The use of public force, the amendments to Initiative nine forty that were actually agreed upon last session and passed into law, those continue to move forward and has full support across the board. And we expect by the end of this month or early February for that, for that bill, it's ten sixty-four out of the House to be, to be passed. So it's moving in both the House and, and the Senate side. Also, we're very happy to see that a Condominium Liability Act Reform Bill has been introduced that has really, you know, right now, the, the laws have, have really not resulted in a lot of condominium developments being proposed, other than in downtown Seattle, where they sell for a million to a million and a half or two million dollars. So that would be a welcome change for some, for cities. And over time, certainly Lakewood would benefit significantly from, from that. On the adult family home business front, I had an opportunity to travel down to Olympia today, and I met with Senator O'Ban's new legislative assistant, Rochelle McCurskey. And I think she has very quickly come up to speed on a number of issues, I might say. And I was wearing several hats down there, but one of them was as the city manager and talking about adult family homes. And so the question I had for her was, you know, has the Senator, Senator considered any of our proposed legislation that we sent down to our delegation? And he has. He has dropped the bill, Senate Bill five zero three eight, that defines who can be in an adult family home. So essentially prohibiting violent offenders and sexually violent predators from being in adult family home businesses, because those need to cater to very vulnerable populations. So we're very pleased to see that. He's also introduced a bill, Senate Bill fifty forty, that essentially addresses county of origin, which would force the courts and DSHS to first and foremost make an attempt to, to return sexually violent predators and violent offenders coming out of DSHS facilities, whether it's the Special Containment Center on McNeil Island or Western State Hospital or Eastern State Hospital, to their county of origin. And also kinda focuses on the issue of, of, of fair share. So we're very, very pleased to see both of those bills dropped. Also, the latter one, the County of Origin Bill, Senator Conway has signed on to that bill as well. So we're happy to see that. We expect that there'll be a public hearing on both of those bills scheduled sometime in, in, in mid-February. Right now, the date that she provided was about February fourteenth or February fifteenth. And so certainly will be ready to, to testify in favor of both of those. I also inquired whether or not there was any companion bills yet. And long story short, I suggested that Senator O'Ban's office reaches out to both Senator, I'm sorry, Representative Kilduff and Representative Levitt to see if they would be willing to sponsor a companion bill in, in the House side. And I'll leave it to his office to determine if they're gonna do, if they're gonna do it or not. In the meantime, I do have a meeting scheduled with Representative Kilduff on February fourth, though I think I'm gonna follow up with her office sooner on this rather than later, and see if she would be willing to sponsor the companion bills on the House side. Because I think it's important that we have a dual approach on this, rather than just relying on one versus, versus the other. Also, there was a, 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 a public hearing today on House Bill ten twenty-three, which is a bill that was resurrected from last session that would allow adult family home businesses under certain circumstances to expand from six beds to eight beds. So we signed in opposed. Also, before the holidays, when we learned that this bill was first coming about, I did reach out to our Fire Chief, Jim Sharp, from West Pierce Fire and Rescue. And the reason being is because the Fire Chiefs Association has, is now supporting us. And so they and the industry, the adult family home industry, the lobbying group, apparently had come to an agreement on certain attributes that would be included in these, in the, in these businesses. For example, additional sprinklers, depending upon the situation and the circumstances. So Chief Sharp was actually surprised to learn that. So he did his own due diligence. He had since followed up with me earlier this week, and he said, yeah, I appreciate what my colleagues have done, but I am not supportive of this. So he went down today with his team, and at the very least, I believe he signed in opposed, if not even testified against it. But I really appreciate Chief Sharp for doing that and following up on our request to take a, to take a, take a look at that. In the meantime, the prime sponsor, Representative Macri out of Seattle, I think when she saw the opposition, she reached out to Shelley Helder and wanted to know, hey, you know, what could we do to maybe get Lakewood's support on this? And so Shelley kind of outlined what we'd be looking for. Based on, I think, her reaction, that's not something that she would be willing to do. For example, talking about what Senator O'Ban has initiated. However, I did tell Shelley, I says, if, if the representative is, is interested, I'd be more than happy to meet with her and just kinda give her, you know, a background on, you know, why Lakewood has concerns, on how adult family home businesses are being used, and maybe we can find, you know, some kind of a middle ground here. So if she's willing to meet with me, I'll go ahead and, 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 and do that. So, I know, likewise, I, I know it's good news that, you know, these changes are being initiated that would perhaps, perhaps benefit, for example, Lakewood and our community, as well as people who are living in adult family homes. But I do wanna manage expectations. We're kind of out there alone on this, on, 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 on this item. So, I think with that, that's my report.
Questions for the city manager? Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not so much of what you have discussed already, but some of the comments that I got today was on Lake Grove here. That service station that is closed on Lake Grove is just down the street from Allen's Realty. There's a new tag on it, and they were, from the gang, it's a gang sign. And the question was, oh, is that building coming down?
Which, which building, council member?
It's a gray, it's a, pardon? It's right down the street from Allen's Realty on Lake Grove, where the new apartments are going in on that side of the road, it's on this side. Just past where the buildings have been taken down already, is a service station that was there. Not a service station, but like a mechanical, auto, yeah. And it's closed, but it's being tagged, and homeless people are hanging out there at night. And the businesses in that area have some concerns of safety.
Okay, I'll, I'll pass that on to CSR T. I'm, I'm, I'm not familiar with the exact building, but we'll, it's on Lake Grove?
Lots down from the houses we tore down.
Yes.
Or gravel Lake Drive, you got the substation of other little businesses, and then that facility.
Yeah, and I've, I've seen folks, apparently homeless folks use it as a staging area. They meet up and swap stuff there and hide stuff between that building and Allen Realty.
Now that the two houses have been torn down, the activity has diminished quite a bit. Now it congregates around that facility.
It's a building directly behind Allen Realty.
There is an electrical outlet there, and they are using that to charge phones and so forth. What? But the citizens in that area are concerned with safety. Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Caulfield, with regards to the landscape maintenance, and it's good news that they're considering a rule change, but given the current existing requirements, did we account for that even when we adopted the nineteen twenty budget? Or is, if it doesn't change, are we looking at, at, at stressing that budget?
Yeah, we did not incorporate that. That is not incorporated into not just our budget, but I don't think any city has done that. As far as what the impact would be, you know, we would be looking to minimize that or not use temporary help or find a different way of delivering those services.
And then with respect to our joint meeting with the school board, are we at a finalized agenda? Or are we still negotiating that?
No, we have. And if you like, I can list off the items here.
No, just to get it sooner than just the, the regular meeting agenda to, to do that. It, thanks, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
What, what other item in, in constituent concerns, comments, questions as opposed to council comments? I've received now at least three complaints, inquiries from three different people regarding grates on gravelly, or plates that are utility access of some type on Gravelly Lake Drive, and basically in front of Clover Park Admin to, between there and, and the town center turn-in. In the outside lane on the Clover Park side of the road, some of them are substantially depressed. They seem to have settled, or they weren't set correctly. And, and they'll really jar your car when you hit them. And so if you're lined up with a couple of them, you get a couple of big bangs, and we're getting start, get a, getting some alignment claims. They need to be raised up. They're essentially a, a, a utility pothole.
Find out which utility is doing that work, we'll pass that on to them.
It's the square ones.
Oh, I know, I know the ones you're talking about. Yeah, I drive over them every day myself. I'll, I'll, we'll find out who the utility is.
It's in pretty good shape. That's in pretty good shape. Very nice email about, there was, he ran into something over here on a hundred. He said it had depressed, and we fixed it. Is that the same thing? Anyway.
But those plates, yeah. So there's a, there's a utility provider that's doing some work there. I'm not, offhand, I don't know which one, and so they have those.
These are permanent, they're not like they're a temporary plate. These are, these are like, for lack of a better term, a rectangular or square manhole cover. And there are some sort of access in the road. I don't think they're a drain, but, and they're in the lane, away from the curb. And people run over them and keep complaining. Council comments, Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just say that I truly did enjoy the Martin Luther King's Celebration on Saturday. And the guest speaker was very, very interesting, and good to know how his life has changed based on people's support. And I'd like to see more of that coming from Lakewood students, because it's happening here as well. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really enjoyed the event. Planning on going to the Chamber breakfast tomorrow. I think we worked that out now. Yeah, am I? Okay. Okay. Yeah, let me know, because I've, I'm planning on going. I thought I was, I was signed up. PCRC Assembly on the twenty-first. I'll wait for your guys' comments on the PCRC meeting the other night, and Mike's crab beat on Saturday, this coming Saturday. So, looking forward to that. So that's it for me.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I did have the opportunity to attend one of the listening sessions that was held by the search group that's looking for the Clover Park School District Superintendent. And I was fortunate that the session that I attended to on a Wednesday evening last week had about twenty-five parents attended. It was orchestrated somewhat in that there is, there is a, a parent's organization that consists of parents from all the schools in the district, and was publicized through them, and they got quite a few. So, while the process is, is, is being set up as a two-step process where the research, the search team has, has been asked to develop criteria by which to evaluate internal candidates, and then if internal candidates are not selected, that then the criteria and to conduct the activities to find external candidates. But I think that the most significant thing that I got from it were the, the comments from all of those parents that generally lined up with what I thought. But they were, that, first of all, they were really concerned that whoever came come with not just theoretical knowledge and, and, and things about being able to deal with two groups of students. And the two groups of students were the, the students who are affiliated with, with military. And the two groups of students were the, the students who are affiliated with, with military families and students who were English language learners or where the family was comprised of English language learners. And the parents were quite certain that, that they wanted someone that had been dealing with those two groups, that understood on the military side, that understood the realities of being a military family. They understood the, have some, some ideas about how the military community structures work in being able to go and do that. And at the same time, they were looking for somebody that had actual practical experience within, within a thing of where there were a significant number of English language learners and that knew how to prioritize the things that would, that made those groups of things professional. And, and essentially they said that they don't want someone that says, yeah, I know that's a challenge, but who would have a learning curve. They, they wanted someone who actually could somehow do that. There was an interesting session of where they were asked, what are the challenges that the new superintendent needs to address? And it, the, the combination of, of, uh, internal trust and internal respect was voiced by parents from multiple schools at multiple levels. Of them, high schools, middle schools and elementary schools. That they said that their comments stem from the conversations that school staff, teachers primarily, have had with parents and their sensing of what, what really are the challenges there. And that, uh, parents were really concerned that a new superintendent needed to do something to reduce the teacher turnover. The, the, the parents felt that too many teachers leave. And, and at the point of where, and, and of course, they're, they're concerned about the, the, the parents' views of good teachers and teachers who were doing that. And, and they, they just don't, didn't see Clover Park being proactive at retaining them. That, uh, going on off to do that. And then there was an interesting question that was asked by the gentleman who was facilitating at the, the, the head of the search team. Uh, and he asked the group there, would they support if the board were to select as a superintendent someone who had come from a non-traditional career path? Meaning, traditional meaning, you've been a teacher and then administrator and then a more senior administrator and now is going to become a superintendent? Or would they be supportive of the district hiring someone that came from a different leadership or, or, or organizational development span? And, uh, the parents were nearly unanimous in saying that they felt that, uh, a, a non-traditional candidate would be not just acceptable, but might be desirable. And there were a number of staff there. And, and the staff were in the exact diametrically different point of view, uh, of, of that regard. So I thought that, that was interesting. I don't know, it was a little bit unclear exactly how would the, the decision process to get through the first phase of deciding whether there's an internal candidate accepted or not. They weren't able to say whether that was going to be done in an, in a, with, with, with interviews in an open meeting or in an executive session. And of, uh, but they assured everyone in the listening session that the board would be provided with a comprehensive summary of all the comments that, that were made. And again, I, the one I went to was one of five.
Well, Ms. Moss? Mr. Stedder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I wanted to compliment you on your remarks on Saturday morning. They, as it turned out, as the whole celebration turned out, they were prescient to what followed, both in the, the poetry and the singing. And, uh, the, I thought the M's, the mistress of ceremonies did a wonderful job, but the speaker, he was, whoever chose him or whatever group chose him, that was an inspired choice. So I was, uh, very, I came away from that, um, that celebration very pleased with how this city and its diversity was showcased at Harrison Prep. Secondly, I did attend the PCRC meeting on Thursday night. And there are a couple of things I want to bring to our attention with regard to the Regional Project Evaluation Committee seat allocation, in which Tacoma has two, I think the Port has one or two, and the small cities have one. Long and the short of it, Tacoma lost a seat. And it was an out, it was a, almost unanimous, excluding the representatives from Tacoma. It was unanimous that they lose that seat. Secondly, there was a public hearing on several of the Pierce County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. For example, Gig Harbor wanted to reduce its UGA by two-hundred-and-eighty-seven acres. That passed. Then we came to the city of Buckley. And the mayor of Buckley and one of her council members spoke at length. We're talking, we're, we're pushing eight o'clock, Paul. Yeah. We, and she spoke at length and why Buckley needed to have the seven-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-three acre expansion to the UGA. And she was clear that the city of Buckley and its council would accept nothing less. Pierce County, um, their UGA, their land coordinator came up and the county offered, um, the city a, a counterproposal of five-hundred, one-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-six acres. And I was sitting next to Doug Richardson and I just turned to him and I said, I'd take that deal. Well, the con, the discussion continued. Does Buckley have, for example, a comprehensive, a completed comprehensive plan? Does Buckley have the ability to extend sewer and other services to this area? So on and so on. And it was getting late and, uh, Mr. Swanson wanted to move things along. And I, I, I'd been bothered by something, so I was the last one to put the old name tag up perpendicular to the plane of the table and I, and he recognized Lake When Lake When got the last word in. I turned to the mayor of Buckley and I said, she was sitting basically one over. And I said, Pierce County has offered you one-hundred-and-fifty-six acres. There's a compromise here on the table. You have said you'll accept nothing less. You've also said you want everything. You want the seven-hundred-and-twenty acres because you have to wait for twenty years in the cycle to come back for annexation. Are you prepared this evening to go home and tell your citizens that you're going to get twenty years of nothing when you could have had twenty years of something? Her answer was yes.
Wow.
I said, then I, then I said, well, and then I thought we were going to vote on this. And I believe the rep, one of the representatives from Eatonville piped up and said, I make a proposal that we defer voting. So it's still out there hanging. I don't know what good that's going to do, but that's that. So anyway, and they had some other items, but the, oh, they did have a talk about, um, it was, had to do with countywide, uh, planning policies on countywide centers, regional growth centers and centers of local importance. And I, I understand that to a degree, but what caught my ear was, quote, JBLM will have a special designation. There was no definition to that. There was no discussion about that. So I, I have a feeling this, this where we place JBLM in our larger future planning still remains to be seen because I'm sure PSRC was listening to everything. No, no, this was just discussion. And then my last item. And I, uh, I mean, it's going to sound like I'm beating a dead fish here as opposed to a horse. But as you all received this week or have read, we got a, um, if you've seen the, the correspondence with regard to, uh, Mr. McClellan and Wahop Lake and the alum solution. And, and we've also seen Mr. Bucie, who I thought wrote a very nice, very well-done description of what the cities, what this body and the city staff has done with regard to that lake. But I have to say, I, I do have one concern that I want to voice. And I mean, I, I heard from, obviously I heard from people sending me emails, but in my own thinking and beyond that research, both men did excellent research. I tracked down, since I'm retired. You knew I was going to come back on you on that, partner. I tracked down their sources. And it is, it is pretty level. Much of it corresponded with my initial research on this when we first discussed this, um, subject some time ago. And there's just one question I have that I want to leave to, with this body. And if we need to open up the discussion, and I'm not particularly advocating that, but, and that question is this. Neither person, the city nor the citizen, can say with any degree of certainty when there will be an achievable result from either using or not using the process. And the reason for that is there is a paucity. There is a lack of literature or research on this because the process of using alum is so new. So that leads me to my question. We go ahead with this. We spend the money on this. Whether we have to reapply every two years, as Mr. McClellan argues, or every five to seven years, which the city's research squared with mine. Either way, since this appears to be a stop-gap measure, until maybe something can be done in the future, is not that akin to throwing money down the drain? And wouldn't it or couldn't it be argued that perhaps for the near future, we would do better from an economic perspective of doing nothing? Let nature take its course. And then if, and if I remember Mr. McClellan's research, he had it at eighty years. Others shows that at a hundred-and-thirty-five years, it may be Wahop Wetlands or Meadow someday. So I mean, it's, I, I'm not, I, I don't particularly want, I, I'm, frankly, I'm not particularly taking one side or the other with alum. But I am, as a public servant, when I look at the money, even though we can afford it now, over what? Three or four, five or six uses? That starts to add up. And maybe, to use a naval term, we need to come to full stop, Captain. We need to stop and think and maybe we ought to just let this go. Because the email that I got from citizens, don't put alum in the lake. And that's where you were dead on with your email response, Jason, to that one woman. Your response was perfect. I mean, my research showed that alum is not, this isn't like we're dumping, um, Agent Orange in the water here. But I mean, it's, it does make me think that, you know, we run a tight budgeted ship here. And are we simply sinking money literally into a lake? As we wait, because we're not going to dredge it and we're certainly not going to get money. We may get something from the Department of Ecology, but we're not going to get the state or the county to, no. That's, that's beyond us. So it's just something that I wanted to raise with this body. And as I sit here tonight, I, I, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little, oh, I don't know, what's the word, worried that we're going to be spending money with no return. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll give you another analogy. I don't like the way my house looks. Paint's kind of shabby. What I really need is new siding. Give it a better look. It's five thousand dollars to paint the house. It's fifty thousand dollars to put new siding on. If I paint it, I'm going to have to paint it every five to eight years. I want my house to look better. I can only afford to paint it. I'll paint it. I know I'll have to come back and paint it in another five to eight years. Maybe someday they'll have cheap party plank that I think looks better and I can put it on. And maybe that's going to be twenty years from now. In the meantime, all I can do is paint.
But you know what, sir? I, I have to respond. I just have, just because I like sparring with you. That's your house. That's your money. That's their lake. That's their money. And that's the difference. But I see, I take your point and you're right, because we can do something now and make the lake look good. Although if you looked at that carp that some, that guy pulled out of the lake. I mean, did you see the size of the, did you read his, that carp was huge and it looked like it was radioactive? I mean, I saw that carp and I thought, there is no way in the world. I mean, it was bright. It was, it was, it was as, like the wood here. I mean, it was just the ugliest looking thing.
Well, you know, if, if, with all the phosphates that it ate, you, you could bury it by your rhododendron and it'd grow like crazy.
Anyway, thank you, sir.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, obviously this is, uh, because the comments of Mr. McClellan and Mr. Russell were well-written and logical, that, uh, they, um, they, they, they did catch the attention of, of some readers and I received the, the emails. I called four of the people that emailed me, you know, and, 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 and talked with them about our process and, and really the, 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 the plan that we have, which was, and, um, you know, and after I talked with them, they seemed less insistent that, that alum was a, not the way to go when they understood the combination of the costs and the time before the funding for something else could be put together. You know, the, um, back when we had approved the, the plan for Wahop Lake, and, you know, I still have the same concerns that I did then, okay, that we passed it in that, uh, we had no centralized agreement on what's the end state we're trying to accomplish. You know, for Mr. Russell, um, particularly, he wants to get the lake back to the way it was seventy years ago. You, you, you know, we wouldn't do that for any other lake in, 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 in the city. And, you know, the estimates on dredging to do that were, were, were all over the board, but all large to be able to go and do that. So, you know, I think where you've gone through and on any, this is one of those things of where you can find a lot of experts, okay, and, 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 but, but not unanimity about what to do. And I guess that I would point out to you that this is not that different from the situation that you posed to the mayor of Buckley. You know, do, do we do something that makes this a better lake for the, for the passive recreational uses that we see for the lake in the, in, 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 in the short term? Or do we wait down the road and, and we continue to have a, a, a lake that is, it's uncertain how healthy it is, which is, you know, I, you know, this last summer was a better summer for the health of the lake than, than some previous summers. And attribute that to some actions by, by Pierce College, I think, that, that, that's going on off. And that, um, the study that I've done on alum, if you, if you, if you, if you do an alum treatment, okay, you see what it gets you, okay? But on the other hand, you don't do any irreparable harm. If you don't like the outcome of the, of the alum treatment, well, you just don't do another one in three years. Or, 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 or whatever it is. On the other hand, if it gets you to what you decide your end state is for the, for, for a lake in a park that's going to have passive recreation, that, uh, you can do twenty alum treatments for, uh, the cost of a partial dredging. So it's, we shouldn't just So we shouldn't just, and I don't think that what we intended to do is do an alum treatment and say that, now that's the plan. I mean, that, that it wasn't actually what was voted for. It was to do an alum treatment while we continue to explore other options. So I, I, I think, you know, we don't really want to go two more summers with the lake just being the way the lake is, with people wishing it was better. We can do something. And maybe it'll be a lot better and maybe it'll be a little better and maybe it will, yeah, well, maybe it wasn't real good. But I'm, I'm opposed to reopening up what we passed. You know, while I didn't particularly like the two hundred and forty-seven page plan, I did vote and I am supportive of what we, what we wrote into the nineteen twenty budget. And then, and then we'll see what we get in these two years as, as a park capital project.
Mr. Mayor? I'll, I'll just weigh on it and on it real, real quickly. I, I just, I've always thought, my reading was, everyone knows that dredging it down to the original gravel is the best idea, right? But the, the best numbers we have are fifteen million dollars. And maybe using the park in a way that will impact users of the park for years with the de-watering process and the smell. I would also note that we have to pay prevailing wage, that we don't really know what's in there. And, and DOE is going to look at that sludge and say, oh, you know, there's one heavy metal in it. Not only are you de-watering it, you're going to treat it like this and you're going to take it to a landfill a thousand miles away, out in the desert, right? There, there are so many negative consequences. So I thought, well, I mean, if these guys are so hot on dredging, let's, let's go out and see if the taxpayers of this fine city are willing to pay a higher property tax or increase the surface water management fee to pay for it over a ten-year period or something. But then I realized that one of the, the rebuttal to Mr. Bucic's remarks today from one of the, one of the individuals is that they're not even ever going to agree to that, right? Because they're going to just, well, you could do it for a million dollars. Well, so, so even when we came up with, even if we spent several hundred thousand dollars to come up with a plan that we would take to the voters, which would probably fail, is my guess, they would argue that the plan is incorrect. That even if we accepted that we could dump it in the park and even if we accepted, they would immediately say, well, the price is too high. I, I mean, we're just never going to get to yes. There's, there's nothing, if, if our, if we put a proposal for fifteen million dollars in the ballot and it lost, they would immediately turn around and say, well, the reason it lost is it was fifteen million, it really should have been four. I mean, and, and, and we're just not going to get anywhere. And, and I think Mr. Branstad's remarks are correct. The, the choice really is to do nothing and, and use the flood control zone district funds, which I have ideas for, that we could use for. Or we use it for this and, or we come up with a different chemical treatment. But dredging at the cost of fifteen million dollars, this isn't, in my, in my mind, just isn't realistic. And I, and I, and, and even if we went out for bid, we would get arguments over it, so.
Mr. Whalen?
Well, maybe I'll start with that and just sum up my comments on the, the lake issue. And it goes to Mr. Branstad's comment about, we have to be clear about the collective end state. And I think when we pass the Wahaup, I think it was the Wahaup Treatment or Wahaup Improvement Plan, whatever the hell the name of that product was, I want to ask, where were all the people who emailed all of us with regard to their public input on the plan during I don't know how many study sessions that we've reviewed before passing the plan? It will never be an active lake. It is a kettle lake that's effectively a duck pond by virtue of nature. It will be used passively, not actively. If those people want to spend fifteen million dollars to dredge and they need to tell the kids at Harry Todd Park and the kids at American Lake Park and the kids that want to get to Edgewater Park, that you can't have any improvements in any of these lakes that actually promote active use because we're going to dredge a duck pond? Makes no sense. We are here to be stewards of the public's money. That is ridiculous. And I think that the alum treatment is what we planned and we passed and we should do it. To the extent there's any feedback that we might want to get from Greg Vigran is if the Northwest Aquatic Ecosystem Aqua checks thinks that herbicide, algicide inactivation chemicals might be of, of value for this year for fifty grand as opposed to alum for two hundred and fifty grand, hallelujah, brother, let's give it a shot. But I'm all for getting the alum done and being done with this issue. It's absolutely crazy. And I would never support dredging for that lake over improvements to Harry Todd Park. We can't even get five million dollars for Harry Todd Park completed. And that is an incredible plan that's going to serve us a hell of a lot more people than a duck pond that has very inactive and not passive uses. It's just crazy. So anyway, enough of that. Yeah. It's crazy.
Which side of the issue are you on?
Yeah. Exactly. You want to go to the analogy in the house? What's even cheaper than paint? Moss out. Spray some moss out on the damn house siding. You don't have to paint it for at least a year or two.
Pressure wash.
Exactly. Spray the moss out and pressure wash and you're done. It's just unbelievable to me, you know? It's the issue of OPM, other people's money. And luckily, we're here and voted to be good stewards of the citizens' money. Okay. I'm off myself, Box. The Martin Luther King event, I thought, was really well done. The only thing I might propose for the committee, in addition to continuing the great speakers that they have, is just maybe shorten it a bit. I think we can get through that in an hour and twenty minutes and have greater impact than an hour and forty or hour and thirty-five. But I think it was really well done. Already talked about the glam event. The school board listening session, I went to one of those. My comments are similar to those that were represented by the others here. I think it was a helpful session. There were about seven of us there. Mr. Bokey and I were there. There were a few staff members there, very few members of the public other than us. And we got the same sort of story. And certainly it's their process. My hope would be that they would come away with it with good, with good commentary and guidance that would be of help to the school board in their selection process. That's all I have to say on that. And then is kind of a tail end to the, the mighty Lake caper, so to speak, in terms of communication to the public about all things city-related. You know, the thing that just amazes me is here we have all this commentary about this lake process, which I, I think is wonderful. It's near and dear to some people's hearts. But the thing that doesn't get the recognition or the incredible public feedback or the multiple, multitude of emails is the fact that the city has gotten some regional, if not national, recognition for our financial stewardship of the city's funds. What could be more important than a positive reflection from a third party providing accolades and verification of the transparency of the public's treasury? Where are the emails about that? No, we are going to email all day long about duck pond. I just, I'm done. I'm done.
I, I strongly suspect that the, the, the lack of interest in the financial accolades is because a lot of that has to do with the ability to be prudent and say no. And instead of giving away other people's money. So the better your, better steward you are of public funds, the, the less you gain accolades for giving somebody something for nothing. I would not refer to it as a duck pond. What, what I view, I, this, this is a dairy farm sewage holding pond that people want or think you can turn into a swimming pool. And that's what it was. You know, dairy farms had holding areas for their liquid manure. And in, as an alternative to that, here they dump the farm waste into the lake. And so, and a variety of other things. So it was, it was actually a, a primary sewage treatment pond without any treatment. It was just decomposing. I too attended a listening session. I went to the first one at the Hope Academy. It was held in conjunction with a periodic coffee with the principal. So there were a number of parents there. It was primarily a non-English speaking Hispanic audience. There was a lot more, there was a lot more informing than there was listening on the part of the facilitator, in my opinion. He was telling us how they were going to go through the, the process, not, he had his questions. And with respect to what you're looking for in the leader, I spoke on the need for someone, this will mirror some of the comments you heard earlier, someone who was actually experienced and had, was a proven leader. This isn't a, an on, on-the-job training position. It's, we can find somebody who has proven results somewhere. Second, that it needed to be someone who was an innovator and open to change because you can't get better results by doing the same thing over and over again. And third, it needed to be someone who was willing to facilitate engagement in, with the community, both individually and institutionally, to bring people in to help. And use, you know, communities and schools on and off again mentoring. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's aligned, sometimes it's not, but with, with the thoughts of the, the district. But there is help out there that people are willing to give and have to engage. And to do that, you have to look beyond internal candidates. I, I mentioned, I have been, I was a school board president for a selection process. It was a national search. We hired one of the assistant superintendents. I have also been in the same position with respect to the CEO of a major nonprofit. We've done it in hiring Mr. Coffield. I've been involved in hiring a number of, of public department heads, executive level. There've always been national, national searches. I've, I've never seen somebody that you wanted to stay quit because you didn't hire an internal candidate. And I would hope that that message gets through. I am doubtful, so in the next day or two, you will see a, what amounts to a, a letter slash opinion piece by me expressing that sentiment in the Suburban Times. Time, so it would be after the recognition of the school board tonight. But evidently, they must have got wind of it. The, it's, it's sad. One of the byproducts of that meeting, however, was some positive comments with respect to public safety in Lakewood. Because the first questions they asked were, what do you like about the community? And what do you like about the school district? And in what do you like about the school district? There were multiple comments from, through the interpreter, from the Hispanic parents, that they really liked it in Lakewood because they felt safe. And that it was calm and they weren't bothered by gangs. I mean, very, very simple needs in life, but the first thing you need to be is secure in your home. And so I, I thought that that was very telling and, and a compliment to our public safety folks. Because it also speaks to the relationship with the police department indirectly. I would hope, going down the line, if we have any influence, that the school district would also, when they get to the, if they ever do a search, because they, they, the facilitator want to call him a search person because he said they weren't doing a search. He flat out said they weren't doing a search. That we're only going to do a search if we don't, we eliminate qualified internal candidates. And if you go on the McPherson and Jacobson website, you will see that they're, they're a modest, moderately sized search firm. There are a lot of search firms in this category. You'll go on some search forums, they'll have fifty, a hundred superintendent openings in the country. McPherson and Jacobson has sixteen. Clover Park isn't one of them. They have a couple in Oregon, they have one in Washington, but they haven't even listed it as an opening. So there's absolutely no effort to search. So that's it. I show the comments regarding the, the Martin Luther King celebration. I, I would suggest next year that we encourage Sally Martinez to get a little more involved and work her magic on attendance. I did receive some comments after the event that people thought, my words are not theirs because these were my words the year before. This is too good an event to only share with this many people. So I, I think there are a lot of, whether it's church groups or service groups or PSAs, there's some, some way to get the word out better so that it isn't predominantly folks that either are in the program or related to people in the program. I'd like to see that broader audience. And I, I, I hate to reward success with more work, but Ms. Martinez has done such a marvelous job on other events and ramping them up that maybe her assistants, if she could come up with some ideas and pass them off to folks that get more people. Any further, well, and where's your? I'm sure I'll hear about that.